Thank you. We're live, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of June 6, 2023. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. Community members are welcome to join us either in person or remotely through Zoom or on telephone. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nixon.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Here.
Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Sweet.
Here, thank you. Our study session tonight is a discussion on potential parks ballot measures. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately 7:30. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So tonight, we have a lot to talk about with the Parks ballot measure. We're not looking for final decisions, but we are looking for some indications of where our council wants to go. I particularly want to focus on elements of the ballot measure and also begin the conversation about type of ballot measure and length of ballot measure, but those are things we'd want to bring back on June 20. Before we started, we wanted to actually have a little bit of a legal discussion about the ballot measure options, and I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Lynn Zwagstra, our Parks Director, to kick us off. And we'll be looking for council questions and input throughout the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Good to see you in person.
Yes, hello, everybody. How are you? Interestingly, I seem to have two versions. That's a different PowerPoint. All right. I'm trying to move the mouse. Sorry, my fingers are going slowly today. Good to see everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor, City Council. We're going to be chatting with you again this evening about ballot measure items. A couple of things that we have on the agenda. Well, first, I'll introduce some folks. We have a few folks speaking to you this evening besides myself. We have Hillary De La Cruz, our Management Analyst. We also have George Doug Dale, our Financial Planning Manager. And then virtually, we have Deanna Gregory, our Bond Counsel with Pacifica Law Group. She's actually going to be speaking to us momentarily. We have a few topics for you this evening, specifically four topics. We're going to talk about the preferred facility selection, the priority elements selection, funding mechanism discussions, and draft ballot measure language. We do have a couple of critical, maybe not decisions, but areas of feedback. That would be the preferred facility and preferred elements to be included in the ballot measure. George also then has some critical elements for feedback on funding, although the majority of that piece will be on June 20. Before we get started, though, I'm going to kick it to Deanna to talk to you about some few specific issues.
Thank you, Lynn. Hi, everybody. Hope you can hear me okay. I'm Deanna Gregory. I'm a partner with Pacifica Law Group, and we serve as the city's Bond Counsel. So I'm part of the Bond Counsel team over at Pacifica. And I love that it says "message from Bond Counsel." It sounds like I'm presiding over something here. You have a lot of concepts to go through tonight. As was mentioned, we are in the preliminary stages of some of these kind of decision-making trees here. And so I just wanted to, just from a kind of a legal perspective, where we're going to end up at the end of the day with this, as you can see on the agenda, the draft ballot measure language, just highlight a few things just to keep in mind as we're going through all the topics and the elements that are discussed today. Because where we end up with a ballot measure will largely depend on a number of things, including which projects that or elements that this council decides to move forward with. Each type of ballot measure has its own requirements. For example, levy lid lift has specific requirements to increase your regular property tax levy above the traditional 1% cap, as opposed to a bond measure, which has a whole host of other different requirements for a ballot measure for a voted bond. So as we're talking about the facility selection and the priority elements, we're going to be talking about those more in concepts of projects generally and types of facilities generally. And then we will get to kind of the funding options later, but we're just trying to uncouple the projects from the funding for this initial part of the conversation and really focus on those different elements and facilities to kind of see where the council's priorities are, to see what works for you all, what works for the community, and then move on from there. So with that, I'll hand it back over to talk about the various options.
Okay. On that note, we will get started. At previous meetings, we spoke about the various facility options that were presented by Opsas Architecture with the feasibility study. PPEC provided a recommendation for the one facility option with a preference for the Houghton Park and Ride site, specifically the 86,000-square-foot facility, followed by the 103,000-square-foot facility as kind of their second choice. Upon discussion, we heard council express the most interest in the Houghton Park and Ride 86,000-square-foot facility. So just a little reminder of what that facility incorporates. It has a two-court gym with walk jog track, two exercise and activity rooms, an eight-lane, actually a six-lane lap pool, but we would potentially recommend to change that to an eight-lap lane pool as well as a recreational pool. A diverse assortment of community spaces, such as a multipurpose room, several multipurpose rooms with kitchen, multicultural and maker spaces, and an art room. The facility would also have some lounge spaces scattered throughout the facility. Here, we'll provide a quick review of why the Houghton Park and Ride sites and corresponding facilities became a top choice. When the facility feasibility study began, Opsas Architecture, along with city staff, created a matrix to evaluate each of the sites under consideration. There were five overarching categories, each with specific subfactors, and you saw those outlined in your memo. The first category was development capacity, and that was a bit about accommodating size of the facility and the parking needs while also enhancing park space available to the community. Then we had economic viability, and that was around synergy with surroundings and partnerships and compatible uses. Then we had stewardship of funding, and this was about issues like avoiding challenging site conditions and balancing the different types of development cost for the site. Another important factor was supports diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And a couple of factors there were access to public transportation, walking or biking, and also a site that would allow for the diversity of spaces needed to serve the community. And the fifth one was regulatory approval. Hopefully, we would be able to avoid sensitive areas and lengthy permitting and approval processes. The Houghton Park and Ride site is ideal due to its location, site conditions, ease of construction and permitting, and support for providing site access and diverse spaces. The 86,000-square-foot facility concept balances cost with service delivery. And just as a quick reminder of the differences between the 86,000-square-foot facility and the 103,000-square-foot facility, very similar. The larger facility has a three-court gym versus the two-court gym in the slightly smaller facility, eight-lane versus six-lane lap pool, reduced size of the community or multipurpose rooms, so 300 people in the larger facility, 200 in the medium facility. And the 86,000-square-foot facility had four different types of programmatic spaces, like art rooms, arts and crafts maker spaces, and those multipurpose rooms, whereas the 103,000-square-foot facility had five different types of programmatic spaces available. So in addition to the analysis done by Opsas Architecture, staff discussed some other factors that are more related to service delivery and ability to meet the community's expectations going into the future. Staff considered programmatic capacity of the facility, diversity of spaces, and ability to absorb growth over time, and whether or not the facility has features that are minimally available elsewhere. The Houghton Park and Ride sites strike a good balance of maximizing programmatic capacity and diversity of spaces with financial sustainability. Council requested some comparison information on facility memberships and features. Here, we show the two largest facilities in the area, the Columbia Athletic Club and LA Fitness. Some of the populations in Kirkland won't really need these other types of facilities. They have the means and interest to participate in facilities like the Columbia Athletic Club and LA Fitness don't necessarily need the Kirkland facility. Now, these two facilities are excellent facilities. They serve an important need in the community. I myself have been a member at both and participated in them both extensively. So having said that, many of the community will actually need this facility. They may need our instruction. They may need the comprehensive youth camps and programs that we would offer, the availability of different activities, and the added bonus of having so many of these opportunities in the same facility where multiple members of the family can participate at the same time. In fact, the modeled membership fees that you see show that the family membership is the best value. LA Fitness has the lowest price point. However, it's important to note that they are a specialty facility with a specific business model focused on physical activity. So you can see that the two community centers have more diversity of spaces, and that's really the difference in business model between the private facilities and municipal facilities is those types of community spaces. So our facility would be the most comprehensive. The price point is critical to the community's enjoyment of this facility, which of course helps them pursue and improve quality of life. This price point is made possible by the levy lid lift that we've been discussing. A homeowner of a $1 million valued property would be contributing approximately $29 per year for the annual operations of this facility. This is an estimate, as are the modeled membership fees. So nothing has been, you know, determined finally, but those are the modeled pieces of information. So on that note, momentarily, you're going to hear that we were also proposing a site repair and replacement assessment for the North Kirkland Community Center site, and that actually would not be paid out of the levy, and we'll mention that in just a moment. But with this summary, the question is, does council have any questions or need any information on the facility options? And then also, correspondingly, would council be ready to proceed with the Houghton Park and Ride 86,000-square-foot facility as the preferred choice for the ballot measure?
If I may, I think this is one example where the conversation is about the investment itself and whether or not whether the investment's in the ballot measure, because this could be a situation where you would choose to do this with general fund, LGTO bonds, and do a ballot measure differently. So, but is this the size of facility that the council, location that the council is interested in achieving for the community?
I think it is. I think the key here is whether or not we own the park and ride.
That's correct.
Councilmember Curtis.
Currently.
Personally, and as PPEC Chair, this is the size and the location of the facility that I support. One thing I just want to stress to everyone watching is there will be an opportunity, as you said, six lanes versus eight lanes. So when we go into design, there might be some fungibility in where and what spaces, not what spaces, but sizes, spaces, and that sort of thing.
Definitely.
Anybody else? Okay.
Any other comments on that? Otherwise, we're ready to then go to some of the potential elements.
I think we're ready.
Okay. Well, here we go.
So just before Lynn starts, I know you all received an email today about, I think it was at our Kirkland, saying that the five elements that PPEC recommended were something that staff said that they must vote on. Lynn can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's actually not how it played out. The five elements kept coming up repeatedly in the PPEC discussions. At one point, we had a vote to say, given that these always consistently be the top five, should these be the top five that we carry forward in the discussions? So we didn't, as staff, impose any decision on PPEC about what was included. This is something that came out of votes at PPEC. So happy to answer more questions on that, but I just, I wanted to clarify that since you all got that email.
Right. There were multiple balancing acts completed and voting processes, and there was very little variability in the top five choices, but considerably more variability after the five, which is kind of how those rose to the top. So now we'll move on to the elements that may accompany the Aquatics and Recreation Center. All of these elements under consideration were featured prominently in the 2022 PROS Plan. The May 1st PPEC meeting discussion did not change the original base recommendations of these five elements, and those would be nine year-round restrooms, three of which would be new, six would be winterized restrooms, green loop trail segments, seven sports courts, which would be pickleball, tennis, sand volleyball, and basketball, teen programs and K-tub operations, and this is a partial funding option that was recommended, and lifeguard hours and water safety education program. So those are the kind of the original base five. Park Board expressed support for the PPEC recommendation but requested consideration of three other elements, that being the park rangers and enhanced safety and security, permanent off-leash dog parks, and synthetic multipurpose sports fields. And those items were incorporated in the community survey. As mentioned, all elements under consideration were priorities listed in the PROS Plan. This table focuses on rankings and feedback about the elements besides an Aquatics and Recreation Center. Here's a summary of the additional feedback received as part of the ballot measure exploratory process. The check marks indicate that the element was in the top five ranked items for PPEC, Youth Council, and the survey. Park Board did not rank the elements. Instead, they just indicated which elements they felt were the priorities. So Park Board did not prioritize the green loop trail segments and felt that the teen programs and K-tub operations, as well as the beach lifeguards and water safety program, are aspects that should be incorporated into the city's annual operating budget versus the levy. So this table demonstrates that the elements of greatest interest across all modes of feedback are the year-round restrooms, the green loop trail segments, sports courts, teen programs and K-tub operations, water safety, and park safety and security. Thus, the right-hand column shows you the staff optimized package recommendation that we will discuss next. So based upon the feedback received during the PROS Plan process, as well as the ballot measure exploratory process, staff created a package at the same price point as the package recommended by PPEC that maximized the elements of most interest to the community. This recommendation keeps the five elements that we just talked about, but then adds features of the park safety and security element, and I'll go through each of those in more detail next. So the staff recommendation package tries to balance the feedback received throughout the PROS Plan and ballot measure processes. We'll highlight here the differences between these two packages. And the staff package, as a reminder, keeps the same price point as the PPEC package. So there is no difference in the first two items, the Aquatics and Recreation Center, 86,000-square-foot facility at Houghton Park and Ride, as well as the additional year-round restrooms. So no change in recommendation there. However, then, on the right-hand side, the staff package pulls in elements of the enhanced park safety and security element. That is a scaled-down version that includes two full-time park rangers, one seasonal ranger, and automatic locking gates. There were several other elements of the package that were not pulled in. So in order to create space for the park safety and security element, a few other adjustments had to be made. One of those was the green loop trail priority segments. We're recommending to reduce that by $1.2 million. Specifically, though, with the plan to apply for grants to leverage those funds, and there are several grants that very specifically match the purpose of this project. So this project is a strong candidate for these grants, those being those being the King County Open Space Grant as well as the Conservation Futures Tax Grants. Sports courts, in order to make room for the high priority of park rangers, we've pulled out three sports courts in order to focus on the four courts that have risen to the top as the most interest in the community. We believe that would be pickleball and sand volleyball, but of course, there are no final decisions until we get into the formal process. Teen programs and K tub operations. This is still the partial funding version. However, we did pull $30,000 more in annual operations into that budget. And then we have the water safety programs. What we did here is we scaled that package down by pulling out the lifeguard hours, but keeping the water safety program. And the idea there was that we could incorporate additional beach lifeguard hours, kind of like Park Board recommended, into the operating budget of the aquatics and recreation center. So as we build that budget, we have the opportunity to look at funding for lifeguards since we'll have, the aquatics facility will be a major component. Another option is to bring in small incremental bits over the next few years until that aquatics and recreation center is operational. So that's, that's an option. And then the additional recommendation of the NKCC repair and replacement assessment, which would be funded from the facilities fund versus the levy. Below the line there, we have the new sports courts, the other three that were pulled out, and those are both the capital and the operating costs if you were interested in pulling that back in. So those are the specific differences, and I'll put that in a chart for you so we can go through each of those and see what pieces of feedback you have or what questions that you have on each of those. So given that we're about to move into some more detailed financial analysis for June 20th, what we're rather hoping is to get some feedback that might indicate, yes, you want to keep this, no, you don't, or yes, but, or no, but types of pieces of feedback. So we'll go through each of those, the first one being, of course, the year-round restrooms. I'll, I'll pass the recreation center since we already talked about that. So just going straight into the elements of the year-round restrooms, six new and, three new, excuse me, and six winterized. Any questions or feedback?
I think support looks pretty secure for that.
Okay. Then we have the enhanced park safety and security, that being two full-time rangers, some seasonal ranger hours, and the automated locking gates. And the reason those two were pulled out of the rest of the park safety and security package is, is that those are the most requested items that we get for park safety and security. We regularly get requests for more park rangers. We regularly get requests for gates that secure the parking lots at night. So it's the two most visible things and the two most requested things. That's why we pulled those two into it.
Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Director Wachstra, for this. I do have a question about the automated locking gates at the parks. Can you talk a little bit more about which parks, how many parks that may cover, and also just what happens when somebody might be, you know, if it's one of our parks that has hiking trails, might be out on a hike and doesn't quite get back to their car in time before the gates lock? Can you just talk a little bit more about how that would work?
Going to have to find my perks that has the list. Okay. Oh, I don't have the list. Do you have the list? Okay. Hillary's going to pull up that list. It's not on my sheet. It's hard to memorize all those different parks with all the different features. So obviously, not every park has automatic locking gates, and some of them have different features than others, some with trails, some with more developed elements like Everest Park with the sports courts. The automatic locking gates wouldn't set to be locked until park closing hours, which is dusk. And that does vary by the time of year. One of the things that we would have to do prior to that going into effect is a lot of signage and warnings and letting people know that when these gates are, are going to actually lock on their own. Then what will likely happen is folks will get locked in. And that will be the last time they do that, though, I think.
And would they call 911 to get help? Okay, thank you.
And then just to answer the first part of the question, so the parks that we are looking at putting those gates in are Houghton Beach Park, Juanita Bay, Juanita Beach, O'odenny Park, Crest Woods, Everest, and that is it.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to scroll back.
And thank you, Lynn. For the additional park rangers, these are two full-time park rangers and one seasonal park ranger in addition to what we already have, correct?
Correct. We have one park ranger right now.
So can you talk a little bit about why the staff is proposing two? And if there's value in splitting things up as foreshadowing some other questions when we get to water safety and lifeguards? I may be interested in some mix and match here.
Sure, absolutely. There's no magic to two, other than the fact that the one ranger right now is not able to get to all of the functions that we had envisioned for the park ranger, primarily because the number one issue is off-leash dogs. So our park ranger spends a lot of time going to the different sites where we have problems with off-leash dogs or to the sites where we have the dog parks, trying to do some enforcement. The second thing is mortgage violations, and those go on year-round, not just in the summer. So that is actually a daily visit of the park rangers to spend time at the docks, looking at the situation there and issuing warnings or tickets, that type of thing. So that's a huge portion of what they're doing. And then the other piece is, there's a lot of customer service. So people lock themselves out of their cars, those types of things. And it's really a valuable function to have someone there that can help them or someone that can get there relatively quickly. You know, assuming we had another or a second or a third park ranger, there's someone who could get there much more quickly than PD could get there. And right now, with one ranger, we have 40 hours a week maximum that can be covered. Unfortunately, now we're operating seven days a week from dawn to dusk. So the operating hours are much more extensive, really, than they used to be with heavy use in the evenings, more so than they're used to be. So, but of course, the, the value call is, is all yours. You can definitely mix and match.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
So thank you, Lynn. I have a follow-up to that. It's really busy now. So, but how busy are they in the wintertime when we don't have as many users in the park? And then what would their time be used for?
Yeah, they are still actually very busy. Again, mortgages every single day. It's not just in the summer. Another thing that we're having a big problem with is encroachments. And so we're trying to work closely with code enforcement. We're actually also working with the city attorney's office to be able to come up with some specified processes to help handle the encroachments. There, there are a lot. So people are putting their gardens on park property. They're putting fences. They're putting up playgrounds. So there's these little expansions and encroachments into the parks just all over the city. That is something that we're trying to make a priority because that essentially takes away park space from the rest of the community.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another quick follow-up. Our park rangers, what kind of training do they have in sort of CPR, life-saving, sort of emergent, emergency medical? And is it at all comparable? I'm just thinking through maybe the upcoming comment, or comments we may have about mixing and matching, and I was just thinking, it's relevant what kind of life-saving training they have.
Yeah, they would have CPR and first aid, and that would actually be comparable to what a lifeguard has. Although I would suspect lifeguards might actually get a little more practice. I kind of hope not, but certainly day-to-day first aid, they'll get more practice. I mean, every day they're giving out Band-Aids and cold packs and things like that. So they would have that same level of certification. That is actually a requirement for all of our staff that are front-facing. I have that requirement for me, for John, for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Got what you need?
Okay. Great. The third one there is the green loop trail priority segments. And this particular element is not quite as defined as the other ones. The goal here is to do the master plan in 2024, which would be funded by the King County Green Loop Funds, not this levy fund. So we already have the funding for the master plan. We need to get that done, so that's the next priority. The master plan, we're hoping, will identify the highest priority pieces of the green loop for acquisition and easements. And then we would work on those in those priority order. As far as a trail segment, the, the segment that is the furthest along in development, meaning that there's been some site assessments, some environmental assessments, lots of discussion with the community, is the Billy Goat Trail. So we anticipate that would likely be the first segment. Any questions on that one?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you said earlier that also the green loop trail would be eligible for grants. Can you talk to us about the success of prior grants and how that works in the process?
We've actually had tremendous success with the CFT, Conservation Futures Tax Fund. In fact, it's contributed to just about all of the partial acquisitions for the Juanita Heights Park. The only, we actually gave back a little bit of money because we haven't been able to come to agreement on some acquisitions that are surrounding Juanita Heights Park. We are still in discussions with two property owners for other segments and believe that the green loop, King County Green Loop funding could continue to help in that regard, and we can leverage that funding as well for CFT grants. So we've had very good luck with those grants. And this particular project matches exactly the purpose of that grant, specifically the piece of the grant about preserving urban green space.
And do you feel like the 4.1 million that's currently in the staff suggestion is enough to, for opportunity costs that we could respond quickly when a piece of property comes forward?
Well, it'll certainly get us moving, that's for sure. You know, we would hope to, as soon as we have the master plan, hope to start applying, actually, we'll start applying next year. And then the next King County grant cycle will be in 2025. We, we just had a grant cycle in 2023. And we have submitted a couple of grants for that, but a, a different component of that grant program. So we would get those applications in in the next cycle and really put our best foot forward on that. So hopefully, we would have more funds to be able to leverage. And those funds, when we, when we talk to the county about those funds, they can sit there for a period of time. We don't have to spend them immediately. So as long as we have the parcels identified and we have a plan to pursue that, there is time to be able to do that. Now, the, the grand total of that project was estimated at $23 million, and that was done internally by Ray... I can't remember. I just forgot Ray's last.
Steiger, Ray Steiger.
Steiger, thank you. Oh, my goodness. Ray Steiger. And he actually went out and walked components of the green loop. He actually mapped the square footage and did a pretty good job trying to estimate what he thought it would take to construct trail segments, purchase easements. And his, his estimate was $23 million for the whole green loop.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. Yeah, it was good to see, because I had questions about this early on, just whether or not the public would understand what the green loop trail meant. And it was good to see the survey kind of came back pretty strong with support on that. So this, this obviously goes towards a purchase of open space and connecting the parks and stuff. I was also think, and, and then trail construction in, in certain locations. I also was thinking that this would go into things, strategies about how to promote both trail connections and then kind of continued preservation of, of green space around, around the hill. And part of that would be through, in my mind, looking at easements and other, other things where we're working with private property owners. Much of that is, a lot of it's owned by, by private property owners. Is that, is that thought to be included in, in this as well?
Yes, absolutely. We would need easements to be able to really pursue this loop. There are many parcels that would not be appropriate for acquisition. We would need an easement. We've actually already identified a couple, and we know of one pretty critical property that is going to be developed in the next couple of years. We've spoken to that homeowner. We've made an offer for that easement, and they said they're just not ready yet. But hopefully, soon, they will be ready. So easements would be a pretty, pretty critical piece.
Okay, well, one of the things I was thinking about, maybe you can talk a little bit more background about any discussions that occurred at PFC. But, you know, if you're building trails, you have to maintain the trails over time. If you're purchasing property, you have to maintain property over time. If you're looking for easement opportunities, that's quite a bit of staff time to, to manage. Did, did you consider operating costs as part of that? Because that is an increased level of, of service as those things are built or...
Yeah. Excellent question. We did not put in operating costs yet because we felt that this first piece of the project, and as, as I mentioned, there will be more, we felt that this first piece with the acquisitions we were likely to be making would not necessarily incur additional expenses for property management yet. Some of those parcels are relatively wild and, and don't need too much management. They will eventually in the future. So in the future, there would need to be some operating costs incorporated into the annual budget.
Okay.
Okay, just to add one comment. The green loop trail piece has always been the weakest piece in my mind. And that is because it doesn't, it's not as compelling. So I, I was surprised at, at the survey results. Because when, I mean, the way that it has to be sold is as the finished product, right? And the finished product isn't even in this concept. So I, that's where I struggle with the green loop trail stuff.
For sure. I can totally understand that. And I think that there are some members of the community who might not necessarily know what the green loop is. But one thing that's come out through all of the feedback with the PROS plan is trail networks has been huge. So even if they don't know what the green loop is, they're probably seeing trail networks as, as a huge priority.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have priority sports courts. And so this would be the top four that we've been getting asked for. So this includes construction of them, and then there will be annual operating costs. Sports courts, surprisingly, don't require too much in the way of annual maintenance. Hard courts in particular don't cost too much. Also, we were really looking at synergy between staff positions that were necessary and how we could pare down any extra costs. So we were able to work that out. So that's what you're seeing with the top four. And then, as mentioned, there were three more in the original package. You know, there wasn't magic in the original package of seven, other than in the PROS plan. Those are the types of courts that were asked about. So pickleball has come up as the number one. Sand volleyball at O'odenny has been in discussions for a very long time with the Vin Hill Neighborhood Alliance since back in the day where the city kind of took over management of O'odenny. So that's been going on a long time. But then when you look at the survey with the PROS plan, there was still a lot of interest in tennis and basketball. So those were the top sports that are getting the most interest. So that's why we put the seven in there. But if you take a look at, well, where's the, the breakdown and, you know, the, the level of interest? The highest level of interest is those two types. That's the method behind the madness on that one.
Question. Can our citizens access basketball courts at the schools?
Yes.
So that's part of our inventory, essentially.
Yeah, that's a good question if we actually put that in our service levels. They can access it. We do consider school space as part of park space. But I don't know for sure if we've counted school basketball courts in our basketball court count. I bet you someone over here could look that up for me, though. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Then we have teen programs and K tub operations. So there were two separate packages that were put together in the, the PFC discussions for the various elements. One was the teen programs. As you know, we have teen programs going on right now with one-time funding. So that whole teen package was considered as an element in the ballot measure for permanent funding. And then we also had the K tub operations as a, as a separate element. And we didn't really have clear agreement with PFC on which of those might be the highest priority. So ultimately, what we, we did some voting and ultimately kind of came up with a middle ground dollar figure on that one. And, and that's what this package is. And then as we were looking at optimizing, we had $30,000. We kind of snuck back into that package. So that's what that one is.
Councilmember Curtis.
What's the $30,000 for? What's the extra $30,000? I'd put it in sport courts.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. You, you can, for sure. And that's the nature of the questions this evening is do you want to do any of those changes out for sure?
No, I'm, I'm teasing you, but what was, you added... But what was, you added extra $30,000. So, what, what was that adding to the package?
It, you know, it's a good question, and we're not quite prepared to answer that question this evening. The reason being is when we look at the two packages together that we've spoken to council about in the past, after the ballot funding, there would be a gap of 200,000. So, with that $200,000 gap, what do we prioritize? Is it the K tub drop-in teen center? Is it the behavioral health specialist? Or is it the different types of programs that would really fully utilize the space that hasn't been utilized before? So, it's difficult to really prioritize those. One thing that makes it difficult is those programs that operate during the day actually are revenue generating and would substitute the operations of the teen center. So, cutting that out actually would give us a negative. So, that means that really the teen programs themselves and the drop-in teen center hours is really what we need to find additional funding for. What we, our plan was to do is to bring this back during the mid-buy budget process, where we talk about the funding available. As per the original plan, when we spoke with council a few months ago, we had that proposal that didn't have quite enough funding, and we would need to come back with you for some budget discussion. So, the plan was to do that with the mid-buy and really have some options available for different service levels that you could choose from.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'd put that 30,000 in water safety education. Just saying. But we're going to have a gap anyway.
Yeah.
Just depends on where we put it, right?
Sure. Yeah. Well, I mean, these are all enhanced services that we're providing, so I guess that's a win.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Lynn.
Well, to answer Councilmember, Member Black's question, basketball is included in the level of service. So, okay. So, we are reporting on the schools' basketball courts when we list all the different sports courts available in the pros plan. Thank you. So, those are the elements. And then, of course, there's the sports courts at the bottom, if you want to pull those in. Or the question would be, are there any shifts or changes you'd like to see made in those so we can do that more detailed financial analysis?
Councilmember Curtis.
I'm sorry, did we skip over water safety education?
Did I? Yes, I did.
We did not talk about that yet.
I didn't talk about that? Oh, okay. Water, water safety and education. So, this is the water safety education program. We pulled out the beach lifeguard hours. The beach lifeguard hours are kind of two different components. One is expanded hours during the weekdays. So, that was one additional hour each day, Monday through Friday, as well as, well, one hour also on each weekend day. So, one hour, seven days a week. And then, there was an additional two weekends in June and an additional two weekends in September. So, there's the possibility of kind of breaking those out, separating those out, and perhaps pulling those in incrementally. One way that we could start is perhaps expanding one week into June and one week into September and one year. Then the next week, see if we can get to that second week of expansion. So, that's one option that we could look at, is expanding it over time in the next couple of years. Or we could, as I was mentioning earlier, an option would be to build that into the aquatic center budget. It's 85,000 of that package.
Could you maybe explain what's, what you get for the 30,000 that you are proposing to include?
Yes, thank you. I'm forgetting important concepts here. Okay. So many details. I don't want to give you any wrong information here. Now, what happened to it? Hillary! I know, I've got a certain wrist right here. Okay. We have the loner life jacket stations at the lifeguard beaches that would be available 24/7. Life jacket fittings and education events. We would have life rings at all the waterfront parks. We do have life rings at many of those now, but we do need to replace them annually. And then, we want to add them to every waterfront park. Water safety education signage for all of the waterfront parks. Educational materials and brochures, as well as outreach activities and events, and life jacket sales in addition to the loner life jackets.
Hey. Councilmember Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry to surprise you with this question, Lynn, but it just came to me a little while ago. A few years back, when we did the first aquatic center proposal, part of the motivation for it was what was seen as imminent risk of the closure of the Wanita High School pool, which would have been a significant impact on the community's access. And at the time, I recall, the city made at least a soft commitment to do what it would take if that, if the equipment there failed or something like that, and the district did not have the wherewithal to keep it open, that we would step in. And I'm curious, number one, the extent to which we've had to do anything along those lines. And number two, does that commitment still stand, right? If there were something serious that happened at the Wanita Pool, and the district said, "We just don't have the money to repair that," would the city step in and try to keep that facility open for the community? Have we thought about that recently?
Yeah. They have made some repairs and improvements to the infrastructure of the pool. We know that they can't expand the pool. So, there's really no ability for them to do that within their footprint. They, they've definitely said that. But they are committed to keeping the pool going, and I believe have applied for several grants to do some more improvements to the mechanical systems and perhaps make it a little more ADA accessible. So, there is a commitment to keep it going, but there won't be an expansion. And as you know, of course, the, the pool would not be available to community members during school hours and also during school sports activities. But it is available to the community for some swim lessons, evenings and weekends. Unfortunately, the community is growing so significantly, and that space isn't growing. So, that's one of the challenges.
I think to elaborate, in our quarterly meetings, the questions, because they have mentioned that they intend to have some funding in their next levies to keep, you know, the investments they need to keep it operating. So, we haven't seen a lot of details on that, but they've said that they've essentially agreed they're going to keep it going. And so, it's just going to be built into their thinking. I think the answer to would we fix it if it broke? I think the answer is, I would bring you a proposal to do so, but obviously, the council would have to decide that. But I can't imagine we and our partnership would let the, the pool close because it, something couldn't be fixed. But that would certainly be a budget option to bring in front of the council. But yeah, I, I think we both want to make sure that that happens, the school district and us, that it doesn't shut down.
I, this is just something I want to understand for my fellow council members. Because what we're talking about is a facility that I think we're all assuming would be additive to the existing aquatic facilities in the city. And if, if we weren't comfortable that the Wanita facility would continue to be available, that might tend to cause us to want to look at a larger facility or the city to, because it would be replacing some of the existing capacity. So, thank you.
Yeah. I think Councilmember Nixon's point is a really good one because I think it, it really helped us with our, with our politics around, around getting the levy of, across the field last time because there was this dire threat that it was going to go away. So, it's encouraging that they've picked up some of the slack. But somehow, we have to put that, that thinking back in in terms of it being such an important asset for the community because we're growing, because, you know, not with the threat necessarily. Although, I've swum in that pool many, many times, and it's only going to stay alive for so long. So, with that, I'll go back to, Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lynn, I think I've been advocating for increased lifeguard hours since I've known you. So, it's, I'm not a strong supporter of cutting back the increased beach lifeguards. And I think it's going to be 90 degrees tomorrow. And I've said for years that people are getting in the water earlier and that we need to keep them safe. So, I, I'm not a huge fan of decreasing beach lifeguards in the ballot measure. If that moves forward, I would really like to see a specific proposal in the mid-buy or something on how we would fund these lifeguards. Because if it's not in our ballot measure, I don't want to spend another two or three or four years expanding our weekends. I really strongly believe there's an urgency to doing this now, sooner rather than later. So, there. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lynn, today, when we have lifeguards on duty during the summer, what hours are they on duty?
12:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
This proposal would add the extra hour.
Yep.
And then, the extra weekends. So, as I look at mixing and matching, my particular interest is expanding into June and into September with the current, for weekends with the current hours that we have versus adding hours. And I'm willing to trade that off to get some of the park ranger investments that you're talking about. So, I'd like to see some options if that adds up within the financial package that we've lined up to be able to say. How do we mix?
So, just to make sure, you're saying leave it at 12 to 6, but extend the weeks versus try to add in the days?
I'd like to understand what that, that cost would be.
And then.
And then, also breaking out the cost of one park ranger and seasonal and the sea, where we end up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. Yeah. So, I, I don't see any of this about, it's not a question about what's needed. It's about a question of what we think should be funded through this levy. And, and I think the one thing that kind of stuck out to me is that the lifeguarding didn't rank as high as we thought through the public survey. So, I'm all for looking at options for how to fund it. And it seems like it's something manageable that could be funded down the road incrementally, like you explained, Lynn. So, I, I'm in support of, of the staff recommendation. This is hard because I was a lifeguard through high school and college, and that's how I funded my, my college activities. I guess to, to, to kind of respond to Councilmember Curtis's question about this being a, a critical thing, do we have, did, did the PFAC look at data that showed that there were increased incidents in June and in September? Or I'm just wondering if there was information that.
No, we, we didn't get into data level discussions with PFAC. I think what Councilmember Curtis is, is saying is really one of the biggest impetus for the, for the recommendation is that the weather is changing significantly, and June is getting hotter. September, it's staying nicer, and so, we're seeing increased demand. And to answer Councilmember Arnold's question, the total lifeguard package is 85,000, 52,000 of which is the weekends with that additional hour on the weekend. And then, the other percentage of it, the 33,000, is for the one extra hour per day. So, we can break that down and look at those separately if there's interest, but.
One follow-up question. One thing that I've just been curious about is you've been saying that it's been getting hotter. And I, yeah, I think, I think we, we feel that, especially this June. The one other thing that I've been seeing and been noticing is that because of that, our water temperatures are increasing, and so, our beaches seem to be closing more prominently.
True.
Last few years. And so, when that happens at a beach that's, has lifeguards, what, what happens? What do the lifeguards do during those two-week, one-week closures? Do they get moved around, or they not work? Or how does we save money?
All of the above. Sarah, would you like to, you can turn on the mic there.
Yeah. So, we keep two lifeguards on at the beach when it's closed, and they serve as beach ambassadors to provide water safety education, remind folks to stay out of the water and, and provide kind of general outreach during the, the beach closure time.
Okay. That would, I mean, that'd be something I'd be interested in monitoring more closely, too, because that's going to affect.
Yeah. Yeah. And to your point, also, the smoke has become more of an issue than in the past. Yeah. And we do often have to close down for that.
We close down beaches for smoke?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just unhealthy air quality.
Right. And so, we'll actually close down all of our outdoor programs when the air quality reaches a particular threshold.
Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, there was a, I think, Seattle Times article just today about how Western Washington is at an increased threat for wildfires this year, so that's very top of mind. Sounds like we may be having a discussion, based on some of my, my colleagues' comments here tonight, about water safety in the future and funding even outside the ballot measure. And so, when we have that conversation, I'd like to have a conversation not just about water safety at our guarded beaches, but other beaches, other lakefront parks as well. As you know, there's been multiple fatalities at O'odenny Park. I know that's not one of our lifeguarded beaches because it's, there are unsafe conditions there, but folks are still swimming there and in other unguarded beaches. And so, we'd like to just have that conversation. I know we've done, I would like to know what we are currently doing and then what other opportunities there are to enhance safety as well. And that includes boating and other things as well. I'd like at some point to, to discuss that. I know we added, thank you so much to our park staff that added some of the loner life jackets, for example, at some of those parks. But it would be great just to get an update on what we're doing and what else we could be doing. Thank you.
Great. You're done?
Yes.
You are done.
Okay. Thank you. I'm actually going to hand it over to George now, who's going to talk about some, oh, sorry. No, I'm actually handing it to Deanna first, right? Okay. Yes.
I think it's back to me.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Hi, everyone, again. I am going to try to put some of this puzzle together. We've heard the word balancing or the phrase balancing act a lot, and I think that's a really good way to characterize the funding that goes along with the, with the overall plan as well. Before we dive into the ballot requirements for a levy lid lift, I just want to take a step back. I had mentioned earlier that different types of funding mechanisms have different ballot requirements, and this is a prime example of one. For instance, the ballot requirements for a voter-approved bond requires certain information to be conveyed to the voters, such as the not-to-exceed-principle amount and, and other information regarding the projects, as well as other information regarding the bonds themselves. And there's also restrictions on how those funds can be used. For example, a voter-approved bond measure, those bond proceeds can only be used for capital projects and not the replacement of equipment and cannot be used for operating costs. On the flip side, a levy lid lift can be used for those operating costs that I know we spent a good amount of time talking about tonight, can be used for capital, but they cannot be used for the payment of debt service unless the levy lid lift is limited to nine years. So, when we talk about ballot measures and different ballot requirements, just please keep in mind that there are a variety of different requirements with not only with what the ballot itself requires, but also what, at the end of the day, those dollars that are generated from the ballot require and can be used for. I'm sorry. So, we spoke a lot about two kind of camps of costs, one being the capital upfront construction and improvement costs that go along with a lot of these elements or priorities that you're looking at tonight. And then, also, the ongoing cost of operations. There's some really great questions regarding ongoing costs because we all know those can be pretty significant. So, a levy lid lift is one of those tools under Washington law that a lot of jurisdictions, including the city, have relied on in, for paying those ongoing city costs related to operations of some specific projects. Levy lid lifts are, at their very kind of foundational basis, are a mechanism for a jurisdiction to raise its regular property tax levy or lift, the lid, that 1% lid that the levy amount is limited to and capped at, at a year-over-year basis. And there are a couple of different types of levy lid lifts that are available to cities. We are going to talk about one specific type. Actually, can we go back for a quick second? We'll talk about one on the next slide specifically. But regardless of which type of levy lid lift the city chooses to move forward with, whether it's a permanent or a temporary levy lid lift or for what the purposes are. whether it's a permanent or a temporary levy lid lift or for what the purposes are, the ballot requirements has to have one key, the ballot, the ballot itself has to contain one key piece of information, which is one of those pieces of information that is a, a number that is somewhat challenging to drill down to when you're looking into your crystal ball into the future. But the ballot of a proposition, so the ballot measure itself, needs to contain the not-to-exceed levy rate for the city's regular property tax levy, completely full of your regular levy that you would have levied absent the levy lid lift, the value of new construction, and really will be that rate per thousand that will be the cap of what the city can levy, assuming that voters approve or if voters approve the ballot measure. And so that number is, is something that requires a bit of a science because when you calculate your dollar rate per thousand, you are looking at two different variables, which is the amount of the regular property tax levy that the city would like to collect in the subsequent year and the assessed valuation. And we'll talk in a minute about how the assessed valuation continues to be, you know, moving up and possibly now down. And so it is one thing that we won't know until closer to the end of the year. But that dollar rate per thousand for the first year of the levy lid lift that it's in effect does have to be included in the ballot measure. So voters approve that not-to-exceed dollar amount per thousand, and that's a statutory requirement. So we can include other information such as the incremental increase per thousand due to levy lid lift or a dollar amount that the city is asking voters to get to as a result of the levy lid lift. But that dollar rate per thousand, that aggregate rate, will be what the assessor looks at, and the city will be capped at the, in, in the first year of the levy lid lift. It is possible that if, especially if you're using numbers, which we frequently recommend to clients that they do, to use a conservative number just to take into account variables such as new construction and changes in assessed valuation. But, so it is a maximum rate per thousand that's included in the ballot measure. The city can always decide to levy less when it comes to the actual setting the city's levy, but it will not be able to levy more than what's in the ballot measure. So that's just a little gentle reminder as you're thinking about the ballot requirements and thinking about assessed valuations and what the city's regular property tax levy would be with or without a levy lid lift, that's just a consideration to keep in mind. A levy lid lift is a increase in your regular property tax levy, so it's not considered an excess levy, but it is a increase in your regular property tax levy, similar to your other regular property taxes, deposited into your general fund. And the city can then, you know, use that stream of additional revenue for the purposes that are stated in the ballot measure. So again, just as a gentle reminder, when we talk about the ballot measure requirements, if we're talking about a levy lid lift, we're talking about basically anything that is not debt service. So we can pay for ongoing costs of operations, maintenance, pay-go capital projects. But if we, if the city decides to use levy lid lift funds to pay for debt service on bonds issued to finance those upfront capital costs, then, then you will be limited to a nine-year levy lid lift. And Washington law does allow, and of course, the city has used these two tools together in the past to issue non-voted bonds payable from the city's general fund and to find, and to fund operations on those projects out of levy lid lift revenue. So that is a way that many jurisdictions have used those two tools together to accomplish its goals and priorities. Okay, so now turning to the next slide. Thank you. All right, so looking at the types of levy lid lifts that are available, we have focused here on the first kind of big-picture type of levy lid lift, which is what we would call a original levy lid lift or a single-year increase or a one-time bump, if you're, if you've heard that phrase before, maybe from me. But this type of levy lid lift increases the city's regular property tax levy above the 1% in the first year. And then subsequent levies are subject to the 1%. So it's what we would call a, a one-time levy lid lift. There's another tool that's available where you can, if approved by the voters, the city can increase its regular property tax levy above the six, above the 1% for not to exceed six years. But there are other more restrictive requirements that go along with a, what we call a multi-year bump. Single-year regular property tax levy, levy lid lift, like I said, can be used for any purpose, including capital, but it just cannot be used to pay debt service on bonds unless it's, of course, capped to that nine-year period. But if, there are no restrictions on supplanting with a single-year levy. So one of the benefits of doing a single-year levy lid lift is that the levy lid lift essentially frees up other funds in your general fund that can be used for other purposes, such as paying debt service on limited tax general obligation bonds. So thinking about putting this puzzle together, one way would be to have a one-year levy lid lift, considered by the voters, if approved, the city would increase its regular property tax levy above the 1% in the first year, generating but specified or a desired amount of dollars to pay for operations, maintenance, pay-go capital, for instance. And then after that, after that first year, the, that city's regular property tax levy would increase how it normally would in the ordinary course at the 1% cap, and those monies could be used for operations and maintenance. Now, the number of years the city can have the, and receive the benefits of the levy lid lift for these parks projects is the distinction between option one and option two. That's up on your screen right now. Option one is what we would call a permanent regular, or a permanent levy lid lift, where that the levy lid lift just becomes part of the city's regular property tax levy, and there's no end date listed in the ballot measure. That doesn't mean that the city always has to levy it. It doesn't mean that, that it's a blank check. There's, there's still the restrictions of what the purposes listed in the ballot measure. There's still, of course, the 1% limit that will apply to the city's regular property tax levy. But it just means that there's no end date listed in the ballot measure for when the levy lid lift will end. So effectively, the incremental increase becomes part of the reg, city's regular property tax levy. Option two would be to time the levy lid lift for a certain number of years. So for example, if the city wanted to time and have a levy lid lift apply for, let's say, five, 10, 20 years to cover either startup operational costs or more long, more ongoing operational costs, or 20-plus years, that is an option that the city has. It does not have to include an end date or an end year. But if the city does decide to include a end time period, or whether that's, it's a, you know, five years or 20 years, whatever the city decides to do, what will happen in the subsequent year after the levy lid lift expires is the city's regular property tax levy will revert back to what it would have been had the levy lid lift never been approved, but assuming that the city would have taken the full 1%. So effectively, there'll be a bit of a fiscal, a little cliff there in your regular property tax levy where it will drop back down to what it would have been. Not quite as far down to what it would have been, assuming that it stayed flat the whole time period, for, for example, for the 20 years, but, but what it would have been had you taken the 1%. So the, really the main difference here to consider as you're kind of putting this puzzle together is at the end of the day, do, what is the impact of having that cliff? And what will be the end result? Will you need to go, will the city need to go out and ask voters to re-approve a levy lid lift? Or will, at that point, will, for example, will be, there could be another funding source? You know, sky's the limit on what, you know, legislation and what our laws may look like in 20 years. So those are your two with a single-year levy lid lift. Those are really your two options for terms of timing. The, the key here, though, is really what you are intending to fund. So not even looking at the ballot measure yet or the ballot language yet, but looking at what you're intending to fund. So whether it's, you know, operating, you know, the aquatic center, operating and maintaining trails, parks, restrooms, things like that, those are the types of projects that we would include in terms of operations for the ballot measure for voters to, for voters to consider. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the levy lid lift considerations. And I know we're, we'll come back, I think, on the 20th to talk about the, the, these options in more detail and kind of how this puzzle fits together with a, a capital or a debt component as well.
I don't know about the rest of council, but what's not clear to me are the pros and cons. So I hope that when you come back, come back with those.
Yeah. Between a, just so we have a good idea of what, of which, comparing and contrasting different options between the levy lid lift options or between voter-approved bonds and a levy lid lift or all the above?
So I think, sorry, sorry, good evening, Madam, councilmembers. Just some background on how these options kind of appeared here tonight. Some of the PFAC conversations that we had were around, we started with a wider universe, including Metropolitan Parks District and some of the bond and operating kind of dual measures that, that Deanna mentioned. These two were two that we focused on in, in one of the PFAC conversations. And the, the advantage of the single-year permanent levy lid lift in this context is the simplicity. You, you know, you have a one year, it's, it's easy to understand. And from a, from a standpoint of kind of sustainability, we know what our property taxes will be. We know what the operating costs are. We can build a financial plan for operating the facilities for 20, 30, 50 years. The advantage, the con is that there was definitely, there were members of PFAC who believe that having a permanent levy lid lift is a harder sell in terms of voting. People would rather vote for something that's time-limited, if there's more kind of control to the voter. For the second option, the temporary levy lid lift, it's almost kind of reversed. So the, the pro is that the voters get to vote again in 20 years. The con, from a sustainability perspective, is that we would have to go back. The, the operations of the facility, the operations of all the other elements that we had funded would be dependent on a successful vote again. The reason we have it here at 20-plus years is because we know that if the facility goes ahead, a significant number of general fund dollars will be tied up in paying that debt service. And it's likely that in 20 or 30 years, that debt service would fall away from the general fund. And so there would theoretically then be operating costs that could be covered again with those general fund expenses. Anything less than that, sort of five, 10 years, which is what you often see temporary levy lid limits, temporary levy lid lifts at, wouldn't give us that kind of ability to build out into once the facility is operating and, and kind of functional. Five years is unlikely to be, you know, it's possible the facility may not be fully operational in five years. And so we, we, we staff recommendation is that we would need a longer-term temporary levy lid lift, even if it was temporary.
Councilmember Nixon.
Well, I just, I just remember when we did the last park levy and road levy in 2012, we studied this question. And ultimately, the council at that time, I think, pretty much unanimously agreed that politically, if I can use that word, there's not a whole lot of difference between nine years and infinite in the minds of voters, right? Yeah, there have been some folks, like you said, on PFAC who argued differently. But we took a risk, you know, 11 years ago and said, well, let's go forward and say that this is going to be permanent and, you know, on the assumption that people would think that nine years are infinite or about the same. And, and it worked, right? So I, I'm not one who agrees with the opinion that people are going to be more accepting of a nine-year levy. It's people's range of vision, I think, is generally shorter than that. And they're thinking about, a lot of people right now are thinking about what's their financial situation this year and next year and not 10 years from now. So from, from my perspective, it would be better to do the permanent option one the same way we did in 2012 with what would be the same result as we got out of the 2012 levies, which is we did a lot of capital things upfront, and now we're using that every year to cover the operations and maintenance cost of what we built with those capital dollars. So I just think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. George, thanks for that refresher. I, I recognize that we've heard it before, but.
No, I'm.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it is good background. And actually, just to follow up on Councilmember Nixon's point, at the end of the PFAC meeting, PFAC voted, and I think it was over 50% voted for the permanent levy lid lift for similar reasons, where the improvements and the elements that we've talked about today are ongoing in nature. And so we, it were temporary levy lid lift, we would most likely need to come back again. And that, you know, and to that same point, you'd probably, people would probably be voting for a similar package in a set number of years again. So is, would it be that different?
Thank you.
So the other, and again, as, as we keep saying, we will, on June 20th, we'll have a much kind of deeper dive into the financial considerations. But something else that we wanted to make sure we, we brought forward today is the potential for future changes in assessed valuation. So we're looking here at the history of assessed valuation in Kirkland and that bar chart on the left. And this is a pretty similar story across King County, actually. So in 2012 to 2013, there was a very small decline in assessed valuation. Since that point, AV has risen every year. And between 2013 and 2022, it was relatively consistent between about nine and about 17%. And so I'll say now, and I'll probably say again, that the increases or changes in AV don't necessarily cause the changes in property tax. We have a budget-based system. And so people often, I would say, essentially always don't know their property tax rate because they see their bill, and that's based on their, their change compared to everybody else's. But the one time you do always see the rate is when you vote on a levy because it's required, as Deanna said, a couple of slides ago, in the levy, in, in the actual ballot title. So between 2013 and 2022, property taxes rose in a relatively consistent way. Since we started this process in 2021, or rather in, yeah, in 2021, property taxes have changed a lot. They, they jumped 30% between 22 and 23, and that was the highest increase that we've seen and that, looking back through our records that I, I could find. And then the assessor has very recently, in the last couple of weeks, I think June 1st was when the press release was put out, has indicated there could be county-wide declines in, in assessed valuation and that they are likely to be largest in the areas that saw the largest increases last year. So the only specific estimates they've given at this point are for Queen Anne in Seattle, which was 8%, and then Sumamish, which was 22%. Sumamish had a very similar, slightly larger than Kirkland, but a very similar increase last year. And so a decline of about 20% in assessed valuation is possible in Kirkland in 2024. And that's what I've put in the chart there. You can see kind of how much it would be coming down from where it is today. So the implications of that are that the package of improvements and elements that we've been talking about today is the PFAC package scenario A there, just over $11 million in annual cost of the city. So the rate per thousand for that would be 23.2 cents. And that assumes our current assessed valuation. If assessed valuation dropped by 5%, the rate would have to increase to 24.4 cents per thousand. If the rate was, if, if the assessed valuation was to drop by 20%, the rate would rise to 29 cents. Um, and so it has a significant impact on how much your, um, what the rate per thousand is that the ballot measure would have to be. Again, it doesn't necessarily change the amount that an, an average household or a median household in Kirkland would be paying for this ballot measure. But because the property value is lower, it increases the rate. I will say as well, as a kind of aside, during this process, because of the kind of extreme nature of the changes that we've seen, we actually switched from, at first at PFAC, we were talking about a median Kirkland home. And then we switched to a home that was worth a million dollars because there was these, because the changes were so big between when we learned of the 2023 changes, it was hard to go to the future meetings and say, okay, so we have to explain that the rate has changed by this enormous amount. So we kind of settled on this, um, million dollar, um, home value. And so that, this is that problem kind of magnified into the actual ballot title. Um, and so this, we just wanted to raise here that, um, there are potential large AV changes coming, um, and likely large declines, which increases the rate per thousand that the, the same level of package would require. So with, um, with what's been said on the last four slides, knowing that we're coming back on June 20th, would be more focused on the financing of the overall package. What additional information would council like by June 20th to help decide whether a ballot measure should be permanent or temporary? Or whether, um, the bond length for non-ballot measure funded capital items should be 20 or 30 years? And just before I stop to help with that second question, um, PFAC package scenario A, that assumes general fund issued bonds at 20 years. And scenario B assumes the same at 30 years. So 30 year bonds do help bring down the rate because we're using less general fund to pay for the bonds.
Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, George. Can you go back a slide? This is, this is a big deal. And, um, PFAC did, uh, decide, we put forth 20 year bonds.
We did.
So it would be package A. And at this point in time, when we're looking at this ballot measure, we have to assume it's going to be at least a 20% drop based on the information we have now, which is not specific information, which puts our cents per thousand at, at 29 cents per thousand. So this was a conversation that we hadn't had with PFAC because this is breaking news. It's brand new. We're all trying to get our heads around that. I did send a note to council last night that I would like to make a recommendation or ask the council's permission to reconvene PFAC so that we can talk about this information and get their feedback. PFAC has spent eight months immersed, and I accidentally printed out the packet. And I'm sure you all read it, that we spent eight months with a lot of data and a lot of information. And I think it's really important that they're brought into this conversation. So before we make any decisions today, I would like your permission to go back to PFAC, present this information, get their feedback. And staff has been very proactive and has already sent some target dates next week that we could do that. We're all strong, strong proponents of this ballot measure. We definitely see the need. But what was really important to PFAC is that this ballot measure passes. And personally, I feel like we have one more shot for this ballot measure. So I want to be, proceed cautiously and gather as much data as we can, uh, before we make a decision to move forward. And right now, this is a pretty strong headwind to try to troubleshoot this assessed value before we actually know what it's going to be. So, um, I am asking council's permission to go back to PFAC before we make any final decisions. And the other thing that the mayor brought up earlier tonight is, um, we will get the Houghton parking ride, but we don't have a bill of sale yet. And I think that's really important when we move forward into this, um, proposing this to the public. So, uh, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
So can I get, you need a motion or can I just get head nods to go ahead with? Councilmember Curtis' suggestion.
Okay. So I hear no objections. So the goal would be to have a PFAC meeting prior to the meeting on the 20th and then come back with an update. It might be a virtual meeting if we, in order to get folks. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate the suggestion, Councilmember Curtis. It'd be great to hear some feedback from, uh, the PFAC on this. I would also ask if we could get staff to, uh, come back with, um, information on both scenarios. Not predicting what PFAC is going to recommend, but I would like to have the option for the 30 year as for our consideration on the 20th.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there's, there's a couple, two issues in my mind that, um, that we might be concerned about. One is that cost per thousand and that there's some threshold that might seem bigger to voters than, than others, even though voters would be paying the same amount, um, in, in total. So it'd be nice to, to see that information in the, in the table of the total amounts. I looked back, I was curious what other levies have been at 25 cents per thousand. Sound Transit, 2016, 25 cent per thousand. So just putting that out there, that it's, it's not something that's, uh, completely unusual. And then I guess the other concern would be that we can't predict what the assessor, the assessed value will be. We can estimate it. And the concern really for me is that I don't want to over collect. I want to collect the amount that we said, that we intend to collect. And so if we set, if we go forward with this and assessed values don't drop as much, then we could potentially over collect, um, and, you know, from, from the taxpayers. I would, in that type of situation, I'd be interested in having some type of companion ordinance that would, uh, would basically tell the public that we would lower the rate if, in a situation where, uh, that, that we overestimate, uh, the amount of decline in assessed value to assure voters that we, there's no intention about collecting additional money beyond what the pa, the package we intend to go forward with. And that would kind of, I think, address that potential concern, right, of over collection. Um, so that's something that I would, I'd like staff to just kind of look at and see what, see if that's a possibility. Something that we consider if we decide to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
Everyone's done. I just want to respond to Councilmember Pascal's, um, suggestion. It, I don't, I think it's a fine suggestion. It's not what people are going to read in the ballot measure. So even if we pass that ordinance, it's difficult to communicate to people. We promise not to overtax you, so.
Right, it, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to put it in the ballot measure. But, you know, one of the things that happens is that we publish information about the ballot measure. And we can, and staff does go around and provide factual information. In that case, they, could they say, oh, by the way, and the council adopted this companion ordinance that would, would lower the rate? And as long as that kind of communication could happen, um, you know, during the presentations and, and on, you know, the city website and stuff, when people are seeking more information, I think that would, that would be tremendously helpful.
Other thing I've neglected to say earlier is I would like, when we come back on the 20th, for staff to bring us an analysis of if we decide to delay to go to 2024, what that would look like, whether we went in February, April, August, whatever. So what our options are and voter turnout and so forth. Um, and also, I would like to request that we don't move forward on item 11E, which is create the pro con committees until the 20th. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. I think that takes us to seven o'clock. Anything else for you, George?
I do think we want to talk just very briefly about the draft ballot title, just to put it in folks' mind, like what it might look like. But we won't take too much longer on this one, we can bring it back. But we did want you to see what a ballot measure that's focused on operations, that meets the current tests and that sets the cents per thousand might look like. So Hillary.
Thank you. So, um, like Deanna mentioned, we have a lot of specifics that we have to follow when looking at a ballot measure title. Um, and a lot of those were shared in your memo. But the biggest thing to know here is, um, we have a 75 word limit, starting at the beginning of the second sentence, the this proposition. From there to the end can only be 75 words and it has to include that rate, um, like Deanna was discussing. And, um, it also needs to kind of share the overall, um, intentions of the, where the funds will go. And so this is, um, a draft of what could potentially be used if council were to decide to do a single, um, year levy lid lift. Um, if it was going to be temporary, there would need to be, um, a little word adjustment to make sure that that was stated in here. Um, but just a couple, you'll notice that this kind of names some of the different, um, things that would be funded. Of course, this would be funding operating and pay go capital. Um, and also includes kind of the general park operations, um, that can catch a lot of things. Um, two things I wanted to specifically note, we used, um, in this draft, and, and again, things can change. Um, but we use water safety programs, which can encapsulate both the lifeguards and the water safety education that we were talking about earlier. And then for green loop, um, we use green loop trail networks, um, just to kind of try to get at some of these conversations that you've all been having about, um, what the wording is related to green loops and trail networks and what resonates with folks. So I think this is, this is what I have. And I don't know if we have time for feedback on it tonight, but I just want, like Kurt was saying, we just wanted to share this as an example of, um, you know, where this could end up.
So it might be at this point, unless there's any immediate comments, that you want to send, uh, individual comments to me or to, or to Hillary. But, uh, this is a draft, it's a starting point, you know? And we tried to capture what things reflected PFAC recommendations and the community survey, that there were sort of the most important in those, what words can be added and subtracted and so forth, as long as you stay within your overall title number.
Thank you. Is this something that potentially PFAC could give input on if they're meeting next week or since they're meeting next week?
Yeah, they did, they did see a similar, they did see a similar one, but we can bring this back to them as well. This has been adjusted slightly to reflect the operations levy versus the, including the aquatics center in the levy.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you. I'm, I'm reluctant to ask this question because it might be a dumb one. It says, concerning funding for enhanced aquatics, recreation and park facilities and programs, this proposition funds new aquatics and recreation center operations. Does not, it isn't specific that we're building an aquatic center. So I'm sure you had a conversation about that.
That's correct. So again, Deanna, so in a scenario where, I like her term camps, if the camp of funding for an aquatic center is coming out of the general fund, then you can't say that in this ballot measure.
Got it.
Do I get that right? Yeah?
Yes, the, the thought is that, um, the levy lid lift revenue would not be used, um, to pay debt service because it cannot be used to pay debt service unless it's a very, very short term levy lid lift. So this levy lid lift would, while it can be used for some, um, capital, it would not be used for those large capital costs, like that would be essentially funded out of bond proceeds.
Thank you. You did explain that very clearly at the beginning of the meeting, so thank you.
Okay, anything other discussion? I think that takes us to, uh, our dinner break.
Thank you all very much, yeah. And we'll just have the exec session at the end.
Okay. All right, thank you. Therefore, we are adjourned till 7:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are back in session following a study session discussion on potential parks ballot measures and a closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Welcome. We are at item eight in our agenda, honors and proclamations.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move that we amend the agenda to move the item 10B, the recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday, to be immediately after the reading of the proclamation on Juneteenth. So we can do those while people are here.
Great.
Second.
The move by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Black. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is our Pride Month proclamation. Joining me to do this proclamation is Councilmember Pascal.
Okay, while that's happening, I just want to introduce, we'll be doing June as Pride Month in Kirkland, and there's a lot of events that are captured in the memo before the council, and also links to additional resources. We also have John Bailey, Kirkland resident, is here to receive it, and anyone else from the community who would like to come up and receive the proclamation, you are welcome to do so. Welcome, everybody. Not quite on there.
Testing. All right, there we go. Okay, proclaiming June 2023 as Pride Month in Kirkland, whereas Pride Month is dedicated to celebration and commemoration of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ people, our family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, who are part of and contribute meaningfully to our community. And whereas, gay pride events are held in June to commemorate the June 28, 1969 Stonewall riots that were sparked in response to ongoing police harassment of New York's gay community, and were also the catalyst for establishing safe places for gays and lesbians to be open about their sexual orientation without fear of being arrested or jailed. And whereas, the fight for dignity, equality, and inclusion for LGBTQIA+ people has been hard fought in the streets and courts of this country. And whereas, to celebrate pride, the City of Kirkland hosted a pride raising of the flag event for their LGBTQIA+ staff on June 1, 2023. And whereas, to extend the celebration to the LGBTQIA+ community, the city for the first time installed a crosswalk modeled after the intersex inclusive progress flag, symbolizing the wholeness and completeness of all LGBTQIA+ people, and hosted an unveiling event at the entrance of Marina Park. Two pages here, all right. Whereas, also for the first time, the newly completed Totem Lake Connector Bridge in Kirkland started displaying rainbow lighting beginning June 1. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now therefore, Mayor Penny Sweet, on behalf of the City Council, in honor of the anniversary of the Stonewall riots, does hereby proclaim June 2023 as Pride Month in Kirkland to celebrate lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and asexual plus members of our community, and as an affirmation of the city's commitment to protect and serve everyone who resides, works, or visits Kirkland without discrimination, as well as its belief in the dignity, equality, and civil rights of all people.
Good evening. My name is John Bailey, and I am an enrolled member of the Mukashut Indian Tribe and a proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community. I live here in downtown Kirkland with my husband of 20 years, and I work for Google here at our Kirkland campus. I'm a true native in every sense of the word. Before we formally kick off celebrations for Pride Month, I'd like to take a moment to center our event. Tonight, we are gathered here on the unceded territory of, and the ancestral land of the Coast Salish peoples. This particular area has been home to the Duamish, Mukashut, Pualip, Skaiomish, Snoqomi, Snohomish, Sukomish, and Tulelip tribes. My people have been here for millennia. In fact, in 2008, an archaeologist sighted at Bear Creek in Redmond, Washington, unearthed artifacts that date back 12,000 years ago. Today, my people thrive and contribute to our state's economies in huge ways under our federally protected treaty rights. I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our mayor, deputy mayor, city council, tonight's organizers, community leaders, and distinguished guests for honoring and celebrating our LGBTQIA+ community. The story of America is of hard fought, hard won progress, and that continues on today. This proclamation reaffirms its commitment to all of its employees and residents alike, for all who live, work, and play deserve the chance to live up to the full measure of liberty and the full experience of dignity. This is especially true when you consider that today there are city halls and state capitals taking up bills with the intention of legislating us out of existence. For me, this serves as a call to action, and that we still have more work to do. Our work continues on in not only changing laws and policies, but to continue the hard work of changing hearts and minds. For me, this proclamation, the pride flags on display, and even our beautiful rainbow sidewalk, serve as beacons of hope. Tonight, I accept this proclamation on behalf of the LGBTQIA+ community with tremendous honor and great pride. Let's celebrate Pride 2023. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to reverse the order of the proclamations for just a minute, so we can do Juneteenth last, and I'm going to invite Councilmember Black up here to do the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. City manager.
I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're proclaiming June 2 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Kirkland, and for the whole month. And again, we have lots of links to more information for people on our website and a description of the purposes of it. And accepting the proclamation will be Kathleen Reynolds from Moms Demand Action, and anyone else who would like to join her. I see another group of folks here, so welcome, everybody.
Testing. All right, great, thank you. So tonight, I'm going to read a proclamation of the City of Kirkland proclaiming June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Kirkland. Whereas, the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, also known as Wear Orange Day, recognized and supported by Kirkland's local chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, a nonpartisan grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures to protect people from gun violence. And whereas, the Wear Orange movement was founded in 2015 to honor and remember 15-year-old honor student Hadiya Pendleton, who was gunned down in Chicago Playground in 2013. And whereas, the foundation of Wear Orange, one second, the foundation of Wear Orange is constructed out of an unblemished desire to shape a future free from gun violence. The color orange, a violent emblem, rather, a vibrant emblem of protection selected by a group of Hadiya's friends who chose the color orange because it is a bold, bright color that demands to be seen, and the color that hunters wear in the woods to safeguard themselves and others from harm. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, every day more than 130 Americans are killed by gun violence, and there were more than 26,000 homicides from gun violence in 2021. And whereas, Friday, June 2, marks the ninth annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, meant to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to formally declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas, the Kirkland City Council has proactively worked alongside the Kirkland community to determine actions the city can undertake to reduce gun violence, launching a massive community engagement effort in 2018, and subsequently passing the Save Lives Through Gun Safety Resolution in May of 2018. And whereas, the Kirkland City Council strives to balance support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding community members, and efforts to keep guns away from those with dangerous and violent histories. And whereas, gun safety continues to be a priority for the council, which funded gun safety measures in Police Proposition 1, the city's enhanced police services and community sales, rather, community safety sales tax measure, which was passed by voters in the fall of 2018. Public Police Proposition 1 has provided support for guns-for-gift cards exchanges, in-person gun safety classes, firearm training videos, free gun locks, and more. Now therefore, Mayor Penny Sweet, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim Friday, June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Kirkland, and encourages our community members to wear orange in honor of Hadiya Pendleton, and to signify an allegiance to those who share the unified vision of a future free from gun violence.
Thank you so much. My name is Rebecca Elbaum. I am the Washington Chapter lead for Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. And behalf on the Washington Chapter and the Redmond-Woodenville-Kirkland Local Group, I'd like to thank the councilmembers and Mayor Sweet for the proclamation. Wear Orange participants included more than 1,500 partners, sports teams, influencers, landmarks, and elected officials over this past weekend. More than 180 proclamations were issued across 24 states declaring Friday, June 2, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. In Washington, we received proclamations from Bellingham, Bothell, Edmonds, Issaquah, Kenmore, the City of Kirkland this evening, Lake Forest Park, Linwood, Maple Valley, Mill Creek, Montlake Terrace, Muckelteo, Everett, Renton, Samamish, Seattle, Shoreline, Snohomish, Tacoma, and the City of Woodenville. Thank you for your support in the gun violence prevention movement.
Okay, and now, Councilmember Nixon will join me for the proclamation for Juneteenth. City manager.
Okay, thank you. So we're declaring June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in the City of Kirkland. Again, the memo has lots of links and history for people to learn more. And accepting the proclamation is Commissioner Sheila Stanton, the Commissioner for African-American Affairs for the State of Washington, and lead on the Juneteenth Planning Group for the event on the East Side, and any of her guests who would like to join her up front. Welcome, everybody.
Proclaiming June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in Kirkland, Washington. Whereas, Juneteenth recognizes and commemorates the day of June 19, 1865, when enslaved African-Americans in Texas were informed by Major General Gordon Granger that they were free, ending 246 years of slavery. And whereas, though President Abraham Lincoln enacted the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, resistance to the executive order, as well as continued fighting in the state of Texas regarding the abolition of slavery, significantly delayed the freedom of slaves. And whereas, on June 19, 1866, one year after Major Granger's announcement, the freed African-American people in the state of Texas held the first Juneteenth, or African-American Independence Day, celebration, and Juneteenth celebrations would later spread to all corners of the country. And whereas, despite that over 156 years have passed since slavery officially ended in the United States, the nation continues to struggle with inequities and injustices, providing us with an opportunity to make meaningful change in dismantling the lingering effects of discriminatory systems and structural racism in our country. And whereas, learning and acknowledging that black slavery in our country is a large part of the history of the United States is of the utmost importance in dismantling systems that do not benefit black people in our country. And, page two. Whereas, learning about black American accomplishments around culture, military, politics, education, engineering, art, music, and freedom, to name a few, is a source of inspiration. And whereas, for people of African descent in this country, Juneteenth is the closest occasion of a true Freedom Day to celebrate with special events, picnics, and family gatherings. And whereas, the East Side as a region will be celebrating the National Juneteenth Holiday, honoring the Day of Freedom in the City of Kirkland at Juanita Beach Park on June 17, with speakers, live entertainment, education, food, and more. And whereas, the city strives to create a Kirkland where black people feel safe and respected, and interpersonal, institutional, and structural racism no longer exists. And on August 4, 2020, the city passed Resolution 5434 to examine and dismantle institutional and structural racism in Kirkland. And whereas, the city is officially adopting June 19 as a city holiday, right after we finish here, beginning in 2023, and for all future years, in commemoration of the emancipation of enslaved black Americans. Now therefore, Mayor Penny Sweet, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in Kirkland, Washington, recognizing its historical importance and calling on our community to join us in listening, reflecting, and acting, so that we can continue to make progress on the arduous journey toward achieving racial justice for all.
My name is Sheila Stanton. I am a commissioner for the Washington State Commission on African-American Affairs. I am also a longtime resident of Kirkland, Washington. I am very proud to live here. This is my team, Ms. Debbie Lacy, who is the founder of East Side for All. Under her banner, we are putting forth Juneteenth. I'm not making a speech, you all just have to come. But I really would like to thank Mayor Sweet, the deputy manager, Mr. Toby Nixon, and all of the city council here for acknowledging and bringing Kirkland into the fold of having Juneteenth as a holiday recognizable in our city and for the East Side region. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. That's all our exercise for the evening, for the rest of the night. Okay, we are now at item number six, communications.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we're going to be, we've moved the item of Juneteenth.
Oh, of course, I'm sorry.
So it's going to take us just a second, since you moved it out of order, for us to get the official presentation and ordinance in front of you, so I'll just say a few words as we're trying to locate that. So this is an actual code change. This will be changing the municipal code to officially adopt Juneteenth as a city holiday, similar to 4th of July, Memorial Day, and Labor Day. And that is encapsulated under ordinance 4850, so. And here to make the presentation is our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging And here to make the presentation is our Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Manager, Erica Mascorro.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As the City Manager said, my name is Erica Mascorro. My pronouns are ella, she, her, and I am the city's Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Manager. And tonight, I am happy to bring you an update to the Kirkland Municipal Code where we recognize Juneteenth as a city holiday. Staff is recommending tonight that the city council adopt Ordinance 4850. This ordinance will update the Kirkland Municipal Code Section 3.80.110 to recognize June 19, 2023, and thereafter as Juneteenth, and be included on the list of observed holidays. I am going to skip the background on Juneteenth, as it was just read on our proclamation. And also this slide where I was going to talk about this year's East Side Honoring Juneteenth Celebration of Freedom that was also covered just now at the proclamation. And so now, I'd like to move your attention to the details on the Ordinance 4850 for your consideration. RCW 1.6.050 establishes Washington State's legal holidays. Under this RCW subsection 6, the city council may choose to adopt more or fewer paid holidays than the state through legislative action, personnel policies, and/or collective bargaining agreements. Section 3.80.110 of the Kirkland's Municipal Code defines the paid holidays recognized by the city of Kirkland's municipal corporation. Ordinance 4850 adds June 19 as a holiday to the Kirkland Municipal Code. On this next slide, we illustrate the city's holiday list, and with your consent, Juneteenth would become the fifth paid holiday for staff, falling between Memorial Day and Independence And now I respectfully ask that the city council consider the staff's recommendation to adopt Ordinance 4850 updating the Kirkland's Municipal Code Section 3.80.110 recognizing June 19 as Juneteenth and included on the list of observed holidays.
Mr. Nixon.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess we could have arm wrestled over who gets to make the motion. But I move that we adopt Ordinance 4850.
Second. Moved in second to adopt Ordinance 4850. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falcone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Sweet?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, council, for all your love and support of the community and DEIB initiatives.
Thank you. Okay, now.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
All right, may I suggest one other change agenda? We have two CERT graduates here, and maybe before adding to the audience, we could do a very quick CERT celebration.
Absolutely.
But that might be a way to be more efficient use of the council's time here.
Do we need a formal adoption, or can we just move it?
I think if there's no objection, I think we can go ahead and move it forward.
Welcome, Heather.
So what I want to do is introduce our emergency manager, Heather Kelly, and our CERT graduate. She's going to say a few words. And they had a separate ceremony as well, but we were able to get two of them here tonight on this beautiful summer day. So we wanted three of them. Oh, sorry. So Heather, please share with us what they've done to earn this graduation.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, City Manager, Mayor Sweet, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and all the council members. I am pleased to be in front of you again with another representation of our CERT program. We have three of our 10 participants with us tonight representing the class. This class was very unique and interesting. It really demonstrated the citywide mindset of preparedness. We have seniors, we had high school seniors, we had family members of mother and son, and we even had one of our own employees who took his personal time, Rod Smith of Public Works, to be a part of the program. So we're really excited to see that expanding growth with the program throughout that. As you know, they're learning valuable lessons about how to prepare for disasters and emergencies, helping themselves and their others in their community, all the fun things that many of you have participated in, from fire suppression, and search and rescue, and first aid, and some of those great things. But as we always talk about, it's about teamwork, and it's about being ready to support our community when a bad situation occurs. And so we want to give them a little nod and appreciate them being here. They were able to test their skills at a disaster training, an all-day event with simulated patients and a lot of fun and challenges. Again, with your support, we're able to do that at the fire station with the traps and the training equipment that our firefighters train on. So they truly get the best experience possible compared to some of the other programs. It was a tremendous amount of work from our students, but also I have to give credit to our instructors, both paid and several volunteer community members that keep coming back, class after class, to assist. It speaks to the dedication that Kirkland has to this program and moving it forward. We have our next class in August of '23. It is already half-full, so we are looking forward to being back with you in a short period of time and having recognized another group of students from our CERT program. So thank you all for your support and time.
Well, thank you, Heather.
Can you introduce our graduates?
Yes.
Angela?
My name is Angela Turk, and I currently reside in the North Rose Hill area.
Hi, my name is Rod Smith. The program was a great learning experience, and I would recommend everyone in the community to take it.
Hi, my name is Alex Nikolkov. I'm a resident of Juanita, and I would like to thank the city for offering this fabulous program and allowing myself and my fellow cohort members to enhance the safety and preparedness of Kirkland.
Well, thank you all. If the three of you would come up here, is David here for a picture?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't the three of you come right up here, and if you counsel crowd around them, we'll pivot off the symbol behind us. Over this way. Over here. This way. Angela, you get right in front of me.
Okay.
All right. Oh, here comes David, and Heather's here, too. Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
I know. Yeah. Okay, great. All right, class, everybody needs to sign up. Okay. Am I in the right place now? I think so.
We're on six, yes.
Okay, so we are at item 6, Communications. And item B, Items from the Audience. This is the time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or scheduled for a public hearing, of which there are none this evening. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and the council will receive up to three comments on both sides of each issue. If you are present, either in person or virtually, and would like to address the council during this Items from the Audience period, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link, or in person using the posted QR code. Community members will be called in the order in which they signed up. Items from the Audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please not clap or applaud after a speaker or express your disagreement with a speaker. We want everyone in Kirkland to feel welcome, expressing their viewpoints, regardless of content. Because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings, regardless of their content. City Clerk.
The first three speakers this evening are Charlie Leibin, Anna Cavender, and Kurt Dresner.
Welcome, Mr. Leibin.
Thank you. Sorry, give me a moment. First time. First time. Okay, you want to click chairs? Go in here, and this one?
Is it the last?
Yeah, that's. Okay. Awesome. Click chair here. And all right. Thank you. All right. Good evening, council members. My name is Charlie Leibin. I live in the Totem Lake area, and you probably see me around on a big red cargo bike, which is this. I use it for everything here. I'm clearing thorn, like invasive Himalayan blackberries, from the cross-Kirkland corridor around where I live. And here, I'm coming back from Malbaks up in Woodenville with some plans for my garden. Sorry, I've lost my voice already. So last Saturday, I decided to visit Marsh Park, because it was a beautiful evening. And I was riding around Lake Washington Boulevard around 12 miles an hour in the bike lane, and suddenly I was on the pavement. And it was surreal, because I don't know how I got there. This is where it happened, and this is more precisely kind of where it happened. So what actually happened, I talked to the driver much later. The car door was open behind me, and the edge of the car door caught my bike, but I kept going forward, and the bike stopped, and I hit the pavement. There was a lot of blood on my right side, my back hurt, my feet and my hands were almost numb. The driver kept asking if they should call an ambulance, and this is the first time in my life I've ever needed an ambulance, so I didn't know what to say. I said, "Yeah." I was going to bike home for some reason, but I changed my mind. So both the paramedics and police came, and the officer insisted I take a picture of the driver's license and registration in case something else came up later. Oh, I must have touched something. But that is my old helmet. My bike went in the back of the ambulance, and I went in the front, and they dropped me off three miles away back at home up in Totem Lake. I took a very careful shower, very careful, found all the saline and bandages in the house, and alcohol pads, and sat on the bed, thinking about how much worse this could have been. So I won't speak for the driver, but I think I told their story here, too. When they handed me the phone with 911 on the line, they were really worried. They were worried about how much worse this could have gone for both of us. I think, I'm not angry at the driver at all. I gave the driver, even though I have to, my address and phone number, and they checked up on me. And I feel that's what community is. But I also kind of feel that the infrastructure failed us both here.
Mr. Leibin, I'm sorry, but your time is up. If you have more information, I believe you sent us an email that has good information in it. I'm sorry that this happened to you, but if there's anything else, any other communication you want to have with us, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Anna Cavender, followed by Kurt Dresner and Mark Chitalis.
Welcome, Ms. Cavender.
Service desk is working on it.
Okay.
That one? That one? Maybe that one has not been pulled up.
So as you can tell, we're still figuring out how to provide presentations during a hybrid meeting, when someone wants to do a presentation from the dais. So sorry for tactical delay as we're figuring this out.
Okay. And it should be this one.
Thank you for your help. Council and audience, following Anna Cavender will be Kurt Dresner, Mark Chitalis, River Carlson, and Alex Zimmerman.
Could just run it here, and it just may not have to be shared on the web.
Okay, Anna, go for it.
Thank you for your help. I really appreciate that. Hello, the members of the city council. My name is Anna Cavender. I live, work, and raise my kids here in Kirkland. As someone who is trying to do my part to help the city meet its climate goals and reduce my carbon footprint, I make a point of using my car as little as I can. I walk my kids to Lakeview Elementary. I've been walking to work for years, and I do all of my grocery shopping in one trip every other week. Recently, my office moved to Bellevue, and I've been considering supplementing my car with a new electric cargo bike, not unlike the one that Charlie has. I think I could probably do my grocery trips by bike, and I like the idea of picking up my daughter from Lakeview next year. My oldest will be at Kirkland Middle, and hopefully she'll be able to ride her own bike. When I think about all the great places in Kirkland that my family could ride, it's tempting to imagine heading to the beaches along our beautiful waterfront downtown Kirkland, even venturing across 520 to the U District once the kids can ride a bit farther. But the idea of riding with a kid on the back of my bike along Lake Washington Boulevard is terrifying. Look at this photo. The cyclist here isn't even in the bike lane, and can you blame him? That truck is a solid foot into the already narrow bike lane. In a way, this guy's approach is safer because it forces cars to slow down and avoids the risk of getting doored. But there's no way that I would encourage my children to bike in a busy street like that. When cars are coming or going from the parking spots, they can obstruct the lane completely, exacerbating an already dangerous situation. Moving farther south, the wall of parked cars becomes a dangerous bicycle gutter. This photo doesn't do it justice, but this storm drain is deep. If you weren't paying attention and you hit that, you could easily lose control of your bicycle. It's even worse if you're on an electric scooter with smaller wheels. This narrowed lane makes it impossible to ensure adequate distance from the moving traffic on the left, especially for younger cyclists like my kids. On the other hand, the wide-open car lanes encourage cars to drive faster, and even this fancy sign doesn't seem to slow them down. The 520 bike trail makes it possible to bike to Seattle, but right as I would get there, right before I would get there, the bike lane suddenly ends, almost immediately after the sign for the Lake Washington Bike Loop. Cyclists are dumped into fast-moving traffic and without Cyclists are dumped into fast-moving traffic and without any warning or protection. The section between the end of the bike lane and the 520 trail is less than 1,000 feet, but this is the critical difference between me choosing my car versus my e-bike to get to the other side of the lake. Biking along our waterfront should be a safe and fun experience accessible to more than just this dude in the spandex. I encourage the council to act quickly and decisively to do what we can, both in the short and long term, to create protected and connected bike lanes along the entire length of Lake Washington Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavender.
The next speaker is Kurt Dresner, and he also has a PowerPoint.
Welcome, Mr. Dresner.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kurt Dresner. I live in the Evergreen neighborhood, and I work, shop, and play in Kirkland. When I found out this weekend that my friend Charlie had been doored by a car on Lake Washington Boulevard, I was worried. I was saddened, and I was disappointed. But I wasn't surprised. Having ridden down Lake Washington Boulevard on many occasions, I know the adrenaline rush that comes with it. Because to cycle down that street is to not only take your life into your own hands, but to put it in the hands of a bunch of complete strangers. What should be a scenic, relaxing ride is instead a gauntlet of protruding side mirrors, speeding distracted motorists, maintenance hole covers, and drain grates. This is a street view image of the spot where Charlie was hit, but early in the morning on a weekend when the street is less crowded. Abstracting things away a little bit, here's a rough diagram of the cross-section of the street. The main problem as regards cyclists with Lake Washington Boulevard is here. This is what I call the cyclist sandwich. As a cyclist, if you're riding in this bike lane, you're flanked on both sides by huge boxes that only seem to get bigger each year. The ones on the left are trying to run you over; the ones on the right are waiting for just the right moment to spring open their doors and grab you. Instead of glancing at the birds flying over the lake or enjoying the views of sailboats or parks, every moment, your heart is racing as your eyes dart around in threat assessment mode. Which of these boxes is most likely to put me in the hospital today, or worse? But you already know this. Earlier this year, the council looked into how Lake Washington Boulevard can change to meet Kirkland's needs and to align with our goals for complete communities and sustainable transportation. This shows what I understand to be the preferred option. It looks fantastic. The report to council also notes, and I quote, "That each alternative could be realized in the near term through interim striping projects." That means that right now, without relocating curbs or constructing medians, we can make headway on many of these goals and even get feedback and iterate before we cast our plans in concrete. With just a bit of paint, we can turn this into this. I realize we will have to wait for the difficult engineering and funding work to enable diversion with moved curbs and medians and so forth. But we don't need to wait for that to protect folks like Charlie or get people like Anna out on their bikes, enjoying our beautiful city and helping us reach our sustainability goals. We can start this work right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Chatalis, followed by River Carlson and Alex Zimmerman.
Welcome, Mr. Chatalis.
I have paper. Good evening. Honorable members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to dress you today. My name is Mark Chatalis. I'm the owner of Cactus Restaurants. I also own the property at 121 Park Lane. I have closely examined the proposal to shut down Park Lane to all vehicle traffic, and I would like to express my opposition to this plan. First and most importantly, I can speak from personal experience that the collective sentiment of the business and property owners of Park Lane is that we are 100% unified in our opposition to the proposed permanent closure of Park Lane. Closing just 400 feet of Park Lane will create what amounts to another park, and it just doesn't make sense, particularly when you consider the low pedestrian traffic and desire to hang out on Park Lane from September through May when it's cold, wet, dark, and children are in school, especially considering the significant negative impact this decision will have on the businesses in the area. While parks are undoubtedly valuable assets to any city, Kirkland already boasts a number of wonderful parks in very close proximity. Shutting down Park Lane to vehicle traffic will significantly reduce access to our establishments. It will make it much more challenging for customers, especially the elderly and disabled, to reach our businesses and the services we provide, resulting in decreased traffic, visibility, and ultimately, potential loss of revenue. We all rely on a steady stream of customers, which are more often different than park users. And without convenient access for our guests and customers, people will go elsewhere. Furthermore, I'd like to draw your attention to the potential complications the decision will create for deliveries and service vehicles. The proposed closure will convert the alley behind Park Lane into an undersized and overused one-way street with no outlet, a disaster for our businesses. The resulting logistical difficulties could lead to delays, increased costs, and even operational disruptions for the small businesses operating in this area. In addition to reduced access, the closure of Park Lane will also have severe impact on parking availability. Parking is already a challenge in our area, and eliminating the critically located and existing parking spaces will exacerbate this issue. The brief seasonal benefits that may be realized from the closure of Park Lane pale in comparison to long-term effects of the reduced access for the majority of citizens, shoppers, and guests visiting Park Lane year-round. As stakeholders in this community, we have a vested interest in the success and vibrancy of our businesses in the surrounding area. We believe that preserving unrestricted access on Park Lane is crucial for business success to succeed and thrive. We urge the city council to consider the overwhelming opposition from business and property owners and to solve other, more pressing problems like bike lanes on Lake Washington Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chatalis.
The next speaker is River Carlson, followed by Alex Zimmerman. And if Sharon Nelson is in the chamber, she follows Mr. Zimmerman.
Welcome, River.
Thank you. My name is River Carlson. I use any pronouns, and I live in Kirkland. I want to thank the city council for your recognition of Pride Month. It means a lot to our community. However, I wanted to address the ongoing issue of bullying towards most trans kids, including me, in our community. People seem to be mostly okay with romantic orientation at Finn Hill Middle School, but trans kids get a lot of hate. I've heard from trans friends at other schools that they get bullied, too. And next year, I'll go to high school, and I'm worried that it'll be the same there. This level of intolerance is not acceptable, and it's something we need to tackle head-on. We must remember that it is LGBTQIA+, not just LGBT. Everyone deserves to feel safe and respected regardless of their gender identity. Let's not just recognize trans people during Pride Month, but also take a stand against bullying and support us trans youth. We can make a real impact and create a community that embraces and includes everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, River.
Next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Welcome, Mr. Zimmerman.
You would not put me in jail. Okay. Zieg Heil, my lovely friend. How many times I told you, so you freaking a critina, degenerate idiot, you know what this mean? You don't give people sign, but you can do in sign in internet. So where is freaking different? So you are a critina, and I told you this many times. Right now, I want to speak about what is very serious right now. Bellevue right now have situation what is don't have analogy, and I remember Microsoft in 96, I speak few times about this, but situation critical right now. So dirty government, Bellevue, blues, plus this council, a pure damn Nazi fascist, a mob, you know what this mean? And Amazon bandito, one bring right now to power people who work for Amazon, Amazon management, and real estate owner, you know what I mean? Situation very critical because when Amazon bring 30,000 people, plan we have right now, yes? Situation will be terrible for everybody in King County and exactly for East Side because prices go to the roof. They will bring 30,000 slaves from jungle, you know what this mean? Cheap labor, like happened before with black people, yeah, how many, 200 years ago? Yeah, 300 years ago. Situation absolutely identical. So I want to speak to you guys because you council support this, too. You understand what I mean? You not care about people. What is you care is about be a mafia, a Democrat Nazi mafia. So right now, it look like a pure fascism, classic fascism, when government together with corporation suck blood and money from people. I'm surprised so people very quiet about this. No need be too smart for understand when Amazon bring 30,000 in Bellevue, everything will be up, rent, price for gas, service, everything. A hundred thousand people will be move out because cannot, will be support their life when rent cost approximately $30, $40,000 now. So what is will be cost? More? 50, 60,000? I speak right now to everybody who listen to me, guys, stand up. Stop be a freaking idiot. We have a fascism government for long time. Democratic mafia control everything. They go on, no, only more, more, more money. No, money is okay. Yeah, they go absolutely power. This is exactly what has happened right now. More money is a different story, you know what this mean? Only part of real mafia, democratic fascism what is we have right now. So please.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Stop this. Thank you very much.
Before continuing, I want to offer a comment on behalf of our council. We heard statements and language tonight that are frankly hurtful and offensive to our community. The city council does not condone those comments. We are committed to making Kirkland a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place for all. At the same time, items from the audience provides an opportunity for community members to express their views to council regardless of content. Thank you.
Is Sharon Nelson in the audience? If not, we have no one else signed up to speak.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will declare this items from the audience period closed. And that will take us to special presentations.
Okay. I will do a brief introduction. We are honored tonight to have as our guest Dr. Jeff Tomlin, the CEO of Evergreen Health. I think this might be the first time we've had the CEO come and speak to the city council, so we really appreciate him coming with us. He's going to provide us a bit of a state of the hospital, and he's been an awesome friend to work with, especially through the really challenging time of COVID and a five of his partner for the city. So welcome, Dr. Tomlin.
Thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and city manager, triplet and team. It is a great privilege to be able to speak with you this evening. And the title is "An Update From Evergreen Health," but this really became an event to all of us at Evergreen Health as we start to emerge from the pandemic. And we really wanted to take the time to get out to visit our community, hear from our elected officials and the community about what they hope for health care and Evergreen Health of the future, and also a chance to share with you all and our community what Evergreen Health has been up to and what we hope to do for the future as well. So I'm about to go, there we go.
Just a second to make sure we share your presentation with those watching online, so.
Thanks. If anybody knows about Evergreen Health, it's probably the city of Kirkland because we have worked closely together, and it's been a great relationship. But I just want to say that even when I started as an NSUZ alderson in 1990, the little two squares there, sort of the Moca covered small buildings, was all that Evergreen Health was. And Evergreen Health has truly grown, both in facilities and services to meet the demands of this really growing community. It's been, you know, important to be local, independent, and not-for-profit and non-faith-based. So we're being a public hospital district fairly unusual as one of the few remaining independents in this area. The services we provide have grown a lot. You know, we've been known for our women's and children's services, almost 400 deliveries a month, the two emergency departments, a number of growing urgent cares, a very good acute care hospital, post-acute care, people not as familiar with that, but the home care and hospice services, unusual, again, for an organization our size to be able to provide services from NICU to hospice care. And then also affiliations with Evergreen Health Monroe, the Fred Hutch, and working together with Overlake to provide services together that we perhaps couldn't provide on our own. So affiliation is very important to us. The quality of care is very good at Evergreen Health. Hope you can be proud of that. The number of awards we've had are remarkable in that they come from many different entities. So you can see health grades on the left. It's our third year of being one of America's top 50 best hospitals, easily ranks us in the top 1% for their methodology. Leapfrog, which is an interesting measure of quality, a bunch of businesses got together, Boeing being one of them, and said, you know, "We demand more health care quality for the dollar that we spend on our employees." And so they came up with this grading system. We've been A for many years now. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, Center for Medicare and Medicaid CMS grabbed a bunch of Yale statisticians and said, "How do we measure health care quality?" They came up with a star system, and we were the first in the state to be a five-star, and we've kept that for the last eight years. One last one of recognition, we didn't even know about the Loun Institute. It's another nonprofit quality measuring agency. Two years ago, Loun said that Evergreen Health was the number-two hospital in the nation for value, which is quality over cost. And most recently, last year in 2022, they said we were the number-one hospital for outcomes of 3,600 hospitals nationally. So I don't say that to brag because quality is a journey that you're always on and never really get there, but it is a sign of the real commitment that this local hospital has given to safety and quality of its patients. Our commitment to the community, the levy funds that our Board of Commissioners, who live in the district and are elected for six-year terms, take this levy funds very seriously. Much of it goes to the great facilities that we have, modern, up-to-date facilities for the staff and the community. About a good third of it goes back into the community to help with things such as youth mental health. We work with North Shore School District in particular, Youth Mental Health Task Force, Community Health Access, Community Advisors Program, senior care, a number of other things that the board gives back, some of those levy funds to support. And what's new, so we wanted you to know that even though we've been really busy with the pandemic in the last three years, and again, hopefully, we're in the post-pandemic phase now soon, but we knew that we had to continue to move things forward. And in particular, an aging facility, our ICU was over 40-something years old, and we were caring for a number of COVID patients in that ICU. But we were able to attain a bond and then build a brand-new ICU. And then our 30-plus-year-old FMC, or Women's and Children's Floors, need to be updated as well, so we've done those even through the pandemic. Also, in the midst of the pandemic, we knew we had to upgrade our digital software, our new electronic health record, which we changed to Epic, a very superior product that was better for our patients and for our staff. And our digital health director, Kai Niander, is with me this evening, but he's very involved with digital transformation in terms of making access for our community to our services much easier. So patients can now communicate a lot easier with their physicians and providers, and in turn, get lab data, a number of other things. And my chart is what we call it, but it's a very superior product. And even though we've hopefully gotten the other side of the pandemic, this fourth year post-pandemic has provided challenges that are probably as great, if not greater, in terms of threatening our independence than the pandemic was for certain. Seattle area is very limited in bed capacity, in fact, one of the lowest in the nation when you measure hospital beds per 100,000 population. And so we're seeing that now. Growing population here, as you all know, in the East Side, Greater Seattle area, we're almost at capacity every day now. And that changed fairly quickly in the last year or two. Prior to that, three years ago, we actually had fair capacity, but the whole Puget Sound now is operating at or near capacity. I'd be glad to answer questions to why that is. But it certainly has had a negative impact on our patient care, and something that's been really tough for our staff is the great demand and the limited facilities is now challenging their ability to provide facilities is now challenging their ability to provide the care that they've been used to being able to provide, longer wait times, difficult to discharge patients because skilled nursing facilities are also experiencing staffing issues as we are and less beds. So limited beds, tough access, many people left the workforce, just as they did for all of you, some of the same things that you've experienced. And so all this is adding into longer stays and less capacity. We did a public opinion poll just to see what was important to the community back in June of 2022. Certainly, mental health is at the forefront of that, and really grateful to be working with particularly city manager Triplett and your team and what you do with the Crisis Center in the five cities. What a great event that you had here not that long ago, but that will really help us. Any day we have anywhere from five to 10 patients that we're boarding in the emergency department that are, you know, using acute care beds, that we must keep them for an extended length of time. And it really does hurt the whole access through the organization. The emergency preparedness is a very important piece of this, and certainly high-risk groups as well as technology. So those are some of the things we heard back from the community. So we looked at how do we meet the demands of the next decade or two, and we really felt we needed to grow. We designed a master facility plan. In fact, we've actually been talking with the city about growth in the facility that we need to do every decade with you all, but, and great help, we really appreciate the partnership there, access and roads and all the things that are important to doing that. And we came up with a facility plan that had nine stories, that was almost very similar to the Silver Tower that we call, that you see, the big eight-floor tower we have. We looked at the cost of that, it was a staggering $800 million. Just 20, 2004, the tower we're in right now is $140 million. So in that short time, the increase is really dramatic. We need to, you know, work on our facility for earthquakes and pandemics and mass cattle events, we need to be prepared for the community in the future. And so we actually looked at potentially doing a bond in November to support adding a new tower as well, 190 to 200 extra beds. But as you all know, it's a pretty challenging time with inflation and taxes, and we looked at that and then went to our board on our last board meeting to talk about whether we should go forward, and the board elected to defer the decision. And I would say it's fairly unlikely that we will be trying to do that in November. It doesn't mean that we won't, we have until August to make that decision, but I think it's highly unlikely. Potentially in April or the next year, it'd be something we'd be looking at. It was important for us to get our finances back in order too. This has been an interesting time as we've had to meet the inflation for all of our supplies and costs, but also to make sure that our staff was paid fairly and competitively to live in this really, you know, expensive area of the country to live. And so those expenses hit us immediately, but we have to work with our payers on the other side to help with that differential. And so we're in the midst of that, and you've seen probably some of that in the press with the ongoing negotiations with some of the payers as well as the providers in the area here. So difficult times, we'll definitely get through it. And we are really, you know, so glad to be a part of the city of Kirkland. And I think, you know, to conclude my comments, just the city of Kirkland was not only put on the map nationally, but perhaps worldwide with the proximity of life care to us and your all support with your first responders in terms of transporting those patients, caring for those patients, and then Evergreen Health caring for those patients. It was remarkable teamwork and really, really grateful for all of what you did for us and the collaboration we've had. So with that, I'd love to answer any of your questions, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jeff. Great report. You are a fabulous partner. We are so proud of Evergreen Hospital.
Thank you.
And questions from the council? Comments? Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you for coming. I was just curious, if you added 192 beds, what kind of staffing increase would that be for you?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. It's a broad one because it's not just the nurses involved, but you have the techs, the CNAs, all the associated lab support that goes with imaging support. I've never really calculated how many total employees, but it would be, it would be challenging. There's certainly, you know, nurse shortage today. Evergreen is actually doing really well, working with some of our partners and getting new young nurses. The problem was sort of the 50- to 65-year-old age group began to leave quicker than we had planned. And yet, the new, young, energetic folks going into healthcare, it's just that it's going to take a while for us to catch up. So I am hopeful for the future, even though it's a challenge right now. I can, I'll be glad to get the number, though, if you'd like that. It's a lot of associated specialties in addition to nursing.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Dr. Tomlin, for joining us tonight. It's great to hear this information about Evergreen Health and really appreciate the partnership. As we look forward about your own capital challenges, I encourage you to continue to work with us and communicate about what your plans are. I know the particular challenges of getting to the bond threshold for passing, and perhaps there's also the opportunity to partner from a legislative standpoint to get some support for public hospital districts, similar to what has happened for schools and to be able to help with that threshold. And I'd like to work with you on that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It will be creative thinking and other ways to look to make that happen. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Tomlinson. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
You know, you got me thinking about a conversation we've had in the past about the intersection between your workforce and housing needs in the region. I'd be interested, I, well, I guess my, my statement is, I hope that we can keep those lines of communications open and that you're talking with policymakers here and staff and our council about what your workforce challenges are associated with housing. But if you want to characterize that for, for my colleagues or staff.
Yeah, thank you. What a challenge. Again, you know, it's tough enough for the nurses to afford housing in this area, but you can imagine the environmental services staff and a number of our technicians, it's extremely challenging. So some live as far north as Marysville and beyond, and then have to drive a long ways to come into work to find affordable housing. So we've, we've spoken with others that, you know, we've spoken with Lake Washington and some of their ideas. We even looked at, you know, the facilities around Evergreen Health. It's just a challenge. And again, that's going to take solving, solving that problem is going to be working with you all and, and others to, I know that you all have similar challenges for your workforce as well. So we very engaged and glad to work with you on that one.
All right.
It's a major challenge.
Thank you. Just one more comment from me. I just got back from a conference of mayors in Columbus, Ohio, and one of the presentations that they did was around artificial intelligence and some of the logarithms that they are working on with regard to extending nursing and providing sort of adjunct services in terms of writing, writing treatment plans that need to go eyes-on with the nurses, but saving up to 45 minutes a patient, which I, was pretty amazing to look at. We encouraged the presenters of the AI systems that we were looking at to take subjects like nursing and other healthcare services where they could take logarithms and, and develop processes that really supplement areas where the workforce is, is kind of stagnant.
I have read some of those same things. I'm convinced that technology is going to help some of, solve some of these healthcare issues that we have. Already, you know, the digital piece that Kai has been working on in terms of tele-visits and people scheduling themselves, but the AI piece of this is going to be dramatic for not only diagnosis and safer care and extending care. I've seen some of that as well. If you've got a shortage, you can really extend your workforce by using AI. So it's going to be an exciting world.
It is.
Also scary at times.
True. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Okay, that takes us to our consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold to re-nota the accounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $4,955,637.41, and bills in the amount of $9,549,923.51.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Just a moment. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Falcone. Any discussion? Question is on the motion to approve the consent calendar moved by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Falcone. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This takes us to our business agenda. Item A, Polaris at Totem Lake affordability, housing supplemental funding approval. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am waiting for my presenter to arrive, Michael Olson, Director of Finance Administration, but I'll go ahead and tee this up. Ah, here he comes. He's here primarily to focus on how we might pay for this, but as you saw from the packet, we got a request from the Polaris project, which is inland housing for a request of $800,000 of supplemental funding. Staff is recommending that we do approve this, and the presentation will cover that. And I'm happy to answer any questions, both as city manager and also with my Arch Board hat on, if council has questions. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I have a brief presentation on the supplemental funding request for Polaris at Totem Lake.
So brief.
David, you are invaluable tonight.
Slide will all advance. All right. As I've said before, technology loves me. I would like to point out that the Polaris is in the 2324 Kirkland Work Program, excuse me, under the city council goals, attainable housing and vibrant neighborhoods. In the middle of this paragraph here, it states that in partnering with Arch, developers, and nonprofit agencies to implement the affordable housing projects, Polaris, in the, in the work plan. So this is part of the work plan. It is going to provide, Polaris is going to provide 344 affordable housing, housing units at various levels of the area median income, including 30 units to those in the 50% AMI and 30% AMI for those that are homeless. This slide shows the, all the funding sources for the Polaris. And in the second column, the 9% column, shows the $800,000 request from the city of Kirkland. And these, this $800,000 will fill the gap of the remaining need for the Polaris and will leverage over $9 million in tax equity funds and over $7 million from King County. So the proposal is to provide 800,000, 170,000 coming from the Kirkland Arch Housing Trust Fund. This is fee and loo money that has been received beyond the annual Arch Housing Trust Fund contributions. And the remainder of 630,000 is from the general fund balance pulling from the $2 million additional set aside for the Houghton Park and Ride. And this will be reimbursed to the general fund through the 2324 biennium by fee and loo payments that will be received. And I would also like to note that approving the fiscal note will give staff the authorization to put this in the funding and for future budget amendments to include this. It approves the funding. Question?
Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you for this. Just for those who are watching and may have heard our conversation earlier about the, hopefully, very soon purchase of the Houghton Park and Ride, can you just clarify whether or not that the $630,000 coming from that $2 million set aside, whether that's necessary for that purchase?
It is not necessary. There has already been funds set aside for the full purchase price. We had set aside, the city had set aside a couple million dollars more just in case the appraisal from the state came out high, which it did not.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Anything else, Michael?
Just the more of questions.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay.
So the action itself would be a move, a motion to approve the fiscal note.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Falcone, seconded by Councilmember Black. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This takes us to item C, our 2023-2028 transportation improvement program. City manager.
Okay, oh, thank you, he's there.
He's there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is bringing back the resolution to approve the transportation program, and our capital projects manager, Rod Steitzer, is here to make a short presentation, and then we're looking for final action tonight.
Great. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, city council, Madam Mayor. Glad to be back. Really have a really brief presentation on our 23 to 28 tip, as it's really a continuation and a follow-on to our May 2 meeting. And really, the primary elements to kind of go over tonight are included and support the information written in the current packet. There's a few highlights here with recent actions since that May 2 meeting. We were able to complete a review of the unfunded and funded projects that are listed in the capital improvement program and make sure that they do align with the transportation improvement program here, and they do. We have also responded to the public comment that was heard at that May 2 meeting, and we did that through our, our Kirkland communication source for our request system with the public. So we have checked that and then made sure that that was addressed appropriately. And also, we had returned on the 16th with a recommendation of which council you were able to approve, the implementation of interim measures to complete sidewalk gaps as discussed in that 16th meeting. The other thing that we kind of are looking at right now is one comment talking about future process improvements for the TIP program. That includes exploring the idea of if the TIP can be adopted together with the CIP and CFP in December of each year. If that were the case, we would need to conduct a hearing prior to those, that December date for those approvals and the authorization for that project. So with that, our action item is to follow up with city attorney's office, work together, and see how that might be an option that could be beneficial and realized for the programs and the public. So with that, really, the request tonight is just for the adoption of the 23 to 28 TIP program and really conduct any questions or discussion at this time.
Thank you, Rod.
There, yeah.
Okay. Council. Councilmember Pascal.
I'll move Resolution 5589.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Pascal, seconded by Councilmember Curtis. Discussion?
Just real quick, thanks, Rod, for coming back and looking through both the CIP and TIP, and then look forward to kind of what you find on aligning the public hearings for the CIP and TIP. I think that would address some confusion, I think, for the public to provide input on how we fund our capital improvements. I do have one kind of question for you, though, just kind of building off of what we heard at the public comments. Could you give an update on what the status is for the Lake Washington Boulevard project, or kind of what's the next steps there?
I'll actually, I'll circle back with our director, Julie Underwood, on that, as our transportation manager has taken another opportunity with a different agency. So I'll need to kind of circle back and really make sure that we get you the correct information or follow some on.
Yeah, I guess one thing that maybe you could look at and talk with the team about is just, you know, as you look to update your CIP, or the CIP this, this fall, look at what opportunities are to advance public outreach and, you know, continue with design of the Lake Washington Boulevard. I'd be, I'd be really interested in, in considering that during the next CIP update. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just building on Councilmember Pascal's comments, I just wanted for folks that might have heard the previous public comment that tonight's action is about communicating our capital improvement program to the state and other granting agencies that we had previously adopted. We took that, that action last December. While we've heard some ideas about additional needs, and Rod, you mentioned in May, we'd heard about other safety projects to do, I think this council will be considering those as we update the CIP, but this is the as we update the CIP, but this is the kind of formalizing what we've done previously, and that's part of why I'd ask, can we do those things together to avoid confusion? Thank you for looking into that.
Thank you for that clarification, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? The question is on the motion to adopt the City of Kirkland 2023-2028 Transportation Improvement Program, moved by Councilmember Pascal, seconded by Councilmember Curtis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. So that takes us to item D, the Parks Funding Exploratory Committee Report. Welcome back, Hillary.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are looking for a council approval resolution accepting the outstanding work of the Parks Funding Exploratory Committee. They had a regular report and a supplemental report, and we'd like to officially acknowledge that. And here to make that presentation is our management analyst, who's helped us throughout the PFAC process, Hillary Dela Cruz.
Also doing the technology. Okay, I think, is that working correctly? Great. Good evening again, council. It's good to be here today. This is going to be a very quick piece here, from my speaking at least. On the screen, you will see in front of you some of the 45 members who make up our Parks Funding Exploratory Committee, who met from September all the way through their most recent meeting on May 1st to discuss what potential elements they would recommend to you, council members, to fund in a potential ballot measure to support parks, recreation, and aquatics in Kirkland. PFAC met 14 times, and each individual spent over 50 hours on this process, many of whom are still involved, a couple who have been here today and are going to continue to be involved in talking with council during this entire process. And so the PFAC report came to council in two pieces. The first initial report was shared with you on March 21st, and then the addendum to the report was shared with you on May 16th, after council took the suggestion that PFAC meet again to provide further recommendations. And so tonight, the staff are recommending that council adopt resolution R 5584, officially accepting the PFAC report and really thanking PFAC members for their extraordinary contribution to the community. And I, as a staff person, would also like to just thank all of our PFAC members, and especially PFAC Chair, Councilmember Kelly Curtis, for the work that everyone has done. It's been a really great group to be working with, and I miss our PFAC meetings, although I know that we, you know, everyone, everyone did a lot of good, and I think that we kind of had the meetings at the right time. Although, as you heard earlier, we will be trying to reconvene next week. So with that, I don't know if there are any questions, but the, so that's the recommendation is to support or approve resolution R 5584 to adopt the lovely report that is many pages long.
Thank you, Hillary. Councilmember Curtis.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 5584.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Black. Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to echo Hillary's thank you to the PFAC members for well-annotated, large report. They did an amazing job. And I was reflecting this weekend on how many people we had come to our volunteer appreciation. They really were a fabulous group of people, and I'm eager to see them again next week.
As eager as we are for you to see them. Okay, the question is on the motion moved by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Black to accept the PFAC report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And we, did we already?
We have not officially deferred the next, that was a discussion at the study session.
Do you want to move to defer it?
Then the next item would be advertising for potential ballot measure pro-con committees, and the suggestion was to defer this to the June 20th meeting.
So do we want that in a motion form?
I think so. I think that'd be.
Councilmember Curtis.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer item 11E, requesting authorization to advertise for potential ballot measure pro-con committees to our June 20th meeting. I think that with the conversation we're going to have with PFAC, it would be more effective to delay till the next meeting.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Curtis, seconded by Councilmember Black to defer item?
10E, actually.
10E, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Takes us to item number 11, reports.
Thank you.
City Council, thank you, Hillary. City Council Regional and Committee Reports. I'll start with Councilmember Nixon.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Gosh, it's happening so early in the day. I don't know what to do with myself. Well, thank, I guess one thing I want to thank staff for the amazing tours of the fire stations, the renovation of 22 and the renovation of 27. I think we all got to participate at different times in those tours, and just appreciate that. And I think the community is going to be really excited to see all the results of all that hard work and the good use of taxpayer dollars. I think Councilmember Pascal already basically addressed one of the issues, but I'll just maybe emphasize it. I would love, we did hear the testimony about interim measures that might be able to be taken on Lake Washington Boulevard, and it sounded like from the last discussion, the staff is going to come back to us with some more information about that. I was just going to mention that in my report, but is that where we're at?
Yes, we'll come back with more information.
Okay. And I, last thing, I just wanted to follow up with the group and mention the senior cruise, which was the seniors, meaning the graduates of the class of 2023 at high schools in Kirkland. They did do the senior cruise on Sunday, June 4, although I was out of town. The word on the street is it went really well, and I've talked to our chief of police, and it seems like everyone behaved themselves very well, and a good time was had by all, and the seniors were allowed to be, you know, celebrated. And I'm hoping that becomes something of an informal tradition going forward in Kirkland. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Curtis.
Awesome. You didn't mention the Pride Crosswalk, so I get to say thank you to Dawn, Erica, Jim, and everyone who was involved to organize that fabulous celebration last Friday. The event could not have been full of more love, positivity, and inclusion. It really was a wonderful night, really was. And I'm still here, people are still going by and taking pictures and are really engaged, so it's exciting. I got my exercise this weekend. I did the NAMI walk, and I did the PRAZ and Pride Walk, and I walked to City Hall yesterday, so I'm on a roll. I also want to do a shout out to KDA, the downtown businesses, and 250-plus volunteers who spent the morning organizing the clean sweep on May 21st. I hope everyone saw a difference, because I was on my knees scraping weeds out of sidewalk cracks, so that was really fun. I also want to follow up on the earlier testimony. I think that what was really clear in the pictures was there is encroachment in the bike lane, and I understand that KPD is going to start ticketing people vehemently. I don't know what the word I want to use strongly. I am a bike rider. I do not ride on Lake Washington Boulevard. It is very scary, and the testimony today was the same experience that I have. A couple questions. It sounds like an ambulance was called, but there is no incident report, so an ambulance does not trigger an incident report? So I'm wondering if these pedestrian or bicycle car conflicts are happening and we aren't tracking them. So is there some way that we can go to the ambulance? Well, it would be a 911 call. So why can't we follow up and find out what 911 calls we're receiving on that? The other question is, we've talked in the past about doing a speed reduction program. I'd like to hear a follow-up on that. And I would appreciate, there was an interesting suggestion today about restriping Lake Washington Boulevard before, if we decide to go forward with the promenade, before doing the infrastructure. I would like to hear what that, what impact, if that would work, what would that entail, what would it cost, so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wasn't super prepared. It's a little bit early. I usually prepare during break, but that's a good thing. Several wonderful things have happened since our last meeting. The mayor and I attended the one-year anniversary at Morningstar Senior Living, and she and I got to give remarks just congratulating them on their beautiful facility, the beautiful home. There were many folks there that were able to age in place from Kirkland, because we asked them that. And there are also some folks who came in from neighboring cities, and some folks who came in from out of state to live there. So really a great facility there and great folks that are living there and working there, so thank you to them for welcoming us there. My colleagues have already mentioned the downtown cleanup. I was also there with a group of friends, scraping out lots of weeds from sidewalk cracks and planters there. So I think it does definitely show that it looks even more beautiful than it did before. Also enjoyed the fire station tours that were mentioned. I was able to attend a session here in council chambers recently on local planning. Really, our staff did a fantastic job in that training. I think Councilmember Curtis was online for that as well. Really just helped simplify and break down barriers in that session for how the community can engage on the comprehensive plan update process, how folks can engage with the planning commission, engage with city council. So really well done to city staff and everyone who was involved in that. I enjoyed that and enjoyed meeting some new folks who attended that as well. The mayor's suite, and Councilmember Curtis and I were able to host a group of fifth and sixth graders here recently too, in council chambers, for a mock council meeting, and it was fantastic. They were prepared. They had different roles that were ready to go. They had public comment. They even threw some curveballs in there for their city council and mayor from the dais. So it was a really, really great discussion, and it was on, you know, they had a set budget and a piece of land, and they had to decide whether they wanted a dog park or a playground. And they decided on a dog park. Thank you. It was a really tight, you know, good discussion on that. So that was just wonderful to be a part of that. Was also able to volunteer with a bunch of folks at the Kirkland Cemetery to place flags on graves of our veterans in honor of Memorial Day, so thank you so much for all the folks that participated in that. Councilmember Curtis mentioned the crosswalk. The Pride Crosswalk celebration was wonderful, as was the pride flag raising here at City Hall. It was wonderful to see so many staff out there and to celebrate together. So thank you to everyone who helped make that happen and everyone who attended. So that's some of the stuff that has been happening, a few things that are coming up. Tomorrow, I'll be attending a housing issues briefing, I believe the Realtors are putting on, on housing issues in the region. Also plan to attend the State of the City Chamber Luncheon this Thursday. I think our city manager is planning on presenting there. Really excited. This weekend, the Little Leagues, the two Kirkland National and Kirkland American Little Leagues have their city championships, where the Kirkland National, Little League from the north, the, you know, the top team there, top teams there play, the Kirkland American Little League teams, the top teams. And I think Councilmember Black and I will both be there, and I'm particularly excited, because I believe I'll get to throw out the first pitch of my daughter's softball game. And so that's going to be really fun and a really great honor to be able to be a part of that for all of the athletes that participate, and the coaches and volunteers as well. Thank you to them. Also looking forward to the Together Center First Look Celebration next week. Really, really so much work has gone into that, and it's an honor to be invited to that, and I'm really excited to see, I was able to tour it with Councilmember Curtis months ago, when some of the things that are now close to completion were still a work in progress. And I know there's still more work to do, but really looking forward to seeing that. Next Friday, I encourage you, if you're available, to attend the SCA Luncheon Learn on King County Overdose Trends and Response. Also, as was mentioned earlier tonight, really looking forward to the Juneteenth event on Saturday, June 17. And then just building on the conversation earlier about encroachment in bike lanes and police enforcement of that, just want to elevate something I had mentioned in a previous meeting, that this is happening around our schools too, and is really some of our most vulnerable bicyclists, our schoolchildren who are biking to and from school. In particular, I see it a lot along 84th, up in Finn Hill, and it may be in other areas as well. It seems particularly bad around near Sandberg Elementary School, but I would just encourage us, yes, to, for our police to look on Lake Washington Boulevard, but other bike lanes throughout the city as well, where that tends to be problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal.
I don't have anything else to report than what's already been added, but I would just like to follow up on what Councilmember Falcone said. I guess I would ask for any information the police have on how many do they ticket in the bike lane. I mean, we see that a lot. How often do we, do we hold folks accountable to that, or give warnings at least? And then, just clarifying my comments on the Lake Washington Boulevard. Julie actually sent an email to the council just now about that. And she reminded me that we said that we would be doing, we'd be looking at that, that prioritization of that project, Lake Washington Boulevard improvements as part of the transportation master plan. So I guess I'd like to clarify my comments as to kind of understand if there can be interim, or we can consider moving some things forward as part of the mid-year CIP update, or do we have to wait until the transportation master plan is adopted next year before we move on anything? I guess that's what I would want to understand.
Yes, let's just give us some time to look at what the interim measures might be and what they might cost. I think that we do need to wait for the TMP for the big project, because it's fairly large and a big investment of resources, and it does need to be in context of the other projects.
Yeah, if you could just come back. I just want to clarify that. It wasn't, it wasn't just the big project, but it was also the interim as part of the CIP update.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things to mention that weren't already mentioned. I represent cities in Western Washington on the State Building Code Council, and in May, the State Building Code Council delayed implementation of our updated codes, including our new energy code. Wanted to let you know about that. Our options to do that are through an emergency rule, which can only last for 120 days. The State Building Code Council was sued in federal court, similar to how the city of Berkeley was sued for federal court for banning new natural gas connections. The issues in the state energy code adopted by the State Building Code Council, we think are different, but we want to take the 120 days, which will carry through November, to consider some clarifications and remove some legal risk. And so because of that, not just the energy code, but all of the codes of this update cycle are delayed for those four months. I think during that time, what will give building code officials and planners some time to train on the new code. I just wanted to let folks know about that, and you're welcome to let me know if you have any questions or feedback. I would also add, last Tuesday, Councilmember Black, Mayor Sweet, and I attended the PSRC General Assembly. They had, in addition to adopting the budget and electing new officers, they had a new, a guest speaker that was a world-known speaker on sustainability. Got a lot of tidbits on there. I'll share some notes later, but one I'll throw out just for the city right now is that he encouraged cities to do benchmarks with other cities that do things better than you. That helps you drive progress and helps you gain inspiration. And I thought that was, as a city that does a number of things really well, I found that really interesting. What are the things that we, other cities do better than us, and let's benchmark against though, then. Thank you.
But who does anything better than us?
Yeah. One LRM that I would like to propose, some, the mayor and I, maybe other council members, heard from board and commission members who recently, as part of their onboarding process, were signing codes of conduct. This is something the city council established in 2012, where we adopted a code of conduct for council members and for board and commission members. Turns out, we're signing the same document, and in some ways, it's kind of weird that some of the things about staff and relationship with the city manager and things that apply to us, the language is the same for board and commissions. And that was some confusion that we heard from board and commissioners that contacted us. So I'd like to propose an LRM that staff look at developing a variant of the code of conduct that's specific to boards and commissions, and come back to us with that.
Second. Move by Councilmember Arnold, second, or Deputy Mayor Arnold, seconded by Councilmember Falcone to produce an LRM as described. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor? That just reminded me, I had two LRM's I wanted to propose as well.
That just reminded me, I had two LRM's I wanted to propose as well.
Oh, you should do it in reports.
Yeah. Do you want me to do it now?
You can do it now, or you can wait until...
Till we get to the LRM section?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I jump the gun?
That's okay. There is no gun. I mean, there is no place...
See whatever you want.
Okay. With that, I think that takes it to me. And just a couple things. City manager and I, along with Diana Hart, took a tour of Kirkland and a lot of our projects to orient Susan Del Benny's office to what we're doing, where we're doing it, and where we potentially are going to need some federal support. That was a really good, great conversation. Also, at Morningstar, one of the issues that came up is that they have been receiving some concerns from our fire department with regard to the number of calls that they're receiving, because it is an elder care facility, but they have no, they have no fall staff on board. What I offered is that potentially we could see about doing some fall prevention training. I'm not sure if our fire department does that, but I think we've had this discussion in the past. So if we could follow up on that. The RWQC Subcommittee that I chair with regard to attempting to get additional federal financing, had a meeting last week with the federal lobbyists for King County. It was a very encouraging meeting. And I think we're actually bringing the meeting, or we're bringing the Subcommittee back to RWQC tomorrow afternoon. So the work that we're doing down there is really working well. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to go to the Conference of Mayors last weekend. It was absolutely the best conference I have been to in my entire career. Not just my, not just this career, but that last one that I left in 2007. It was fabulous. And I heavily encourage us to consider looking at this organization in terms of the resources that it could bring to us. With that, I'll turn it over to you, City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Councilmember Falcone mentioned, I have the privilege of speaking at the chamber on Thursday. Just a heads up, what I'll be talking about is the city work program and some of the other comments that you heard us talk about, the thriving community economic development strategy. So hopefully you'll find it new and interesting, but it's going to be some of the same stuff that you've heard quite, quite a bit. So...
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
Thank you. Thank you. So I look forward to seeing you all there, if you can be there. I know some of you have conflicts. So we do have LRM's up next. So I want to say just a couple of things before we have the requests, and then we actually have one presentation. So the LRM process is still somewhat due. One of the things that I've asked is Carly Jurger, as she's finished up the legislative session, I've asked her to help me sort of corral the LRM process. So we have some ones that are outstanding, and our protocols are not as clear as I would like them to be. So as you're making LRM requests, we're also going to be tightening up exactly how we track them and report back to you. And so the goal with legislative request memos is generally to have a report back within two council meetings if we can. I think what has happened, both in council members' minds and in staff's minds, is they're sort of turning into the actual task versus the pre-task. And so what we're trying to do is remind people that, no, you're not supposed to go do all the work. You're supposed to tell them what it would take to do the work and see if they want us to go forward. So more improvements and refinements to come on the LRM process. So I just wanted you to know that. The other part I wanted to give you is, I know some of you have had some challenges with the council packets in various ways. We've had some conversations about that. The city clerk's office, IT, everyone's been doing extraordinary work to fix it. We have found one likely culprit is that it is our Tohoma font does not play well with Adobe and getting into PDFs. And that seems to be one of the culprits in certain browsers and certain websites. So one thing you're going to hear us do, as I've now learned, is actually we're going to be moving to Arial font, which is one that's actually worked by, your memos and stuff are going to start to look different. But hopefully that will actually start to help solve the problem. And I also want to give you a heads up that we are also in the process of improving our legislative package system. We have, thanks to the council's funding, money for a new, whole new software program, and the city clerk's office again, and finance, and others have been working on this. That is getting ready to be demoed with the design review board as a starting point to see if it works. And if so, then we'll start to roll it out to the council with some training and so forth. So all to say, we want to bring our system into the current status of things and help some, resolve some of these problems as everybody's struggling with different computers and different devices and different technologies. Hopefully, a lot of these things will, will make it all better. So with that, I want to go to the LRM report we have today on service boxes and wrapping them, and then I'll take LRM requests from the council at the end of that. But first, any questions on anything I just covered before we go to Diana Hart and utility boxes? I would note, both Smitha Krishnan and Michael Olson have wanted me to say that if you do encounter problems, please don't hesitate to let us know. We do want to help you fix them, and we have staff on both sides that are, that are ready and able. So to dot software and silence, let us know, and we'll try to fix it for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Diana.
All right. With that, Diana Hart is going to reply to the multiple LRM's on utility wrapping, utility boxes. So.
Good evening, council. I have a brief presentation, just sort of recapping the memo to get us all on the same page. Starting with our, we worked with the Public Works team to get a good handle on the number of utility boxes that the city owns. They established that the traffic signal service cabinets would be the best candidate for utility wraps at the city, because they're both located at intersections, which are great visible places, but they're also of large size. So they will be the best candidates for us to focus for this project. There's a map in the packet that outlines where all of the service cabinets that are for traffic signals are across the city. You'll see they're quite distributed throughout the city. There are 16 new style cabinets and 46 old style cabinets, which are set to be replaced in the next five to seven years. So something to think about as you're pondering what the program should look like on the next slide when we get to considerations. This, earlier this year, we brought to council the latest utility box wrap program, which costs about $3,000 per side-by-side cabinet, which was two cabinets right next to each other. So we actually asked our artists to provide two pieces of work for a stipend of $1,500 per artist, with an equivalent amount for manufacturing and installation. So if we were to wrap all the city's traffic signal service cabinets, it could cost around $200,000 at these rates. Some other examples of cities that have done similar programs in the last couple of months include Newcastle, which offered a stipend of $800 for one piece at two different locations, and Seattle, which offered $4,000 for two pieces of art to be installed at seven locations in the neighborhood. On the end of the LRM, we have a good number of considerations for you to think about as you're exploring what expanding and continuing this program could look like. The first bucket has to do with the process for selection of art. The city currently uses an art call process. It's somewhat similar to our RFP process to select and find artists to submit work for consideration. That process is done with the Cultural Arts Commission commissioners. And then there's a pretty involved process that is, does take quite a bit of staff and commission time to do, but has produced some really wonderful work for the city. So there's two options here, whether to do an art call once and get a big pool of art, or to do an art call each year for art to be used for cabinets each year. And then the three and four options are alternative, whether that's community groups selecting works or staff selecting works to be used, and that could be sort of designs that the community groups or staff create, or existing works that might be around in our profile already. The second group of questions we have is around what the program looks like. The first two bullets are on how the city might want to consider wrapping our utility boxes, whether that's establishing a certain number of boxes to be wrapped each year, or to be incorporating into the cost of replacement, the installation of wraps moving forward. The third one has to do with the request to consider what exploring development changes, or code changes to require developers to wrap cabinets. And then the fourth one is pursuing a program for our community groups to request cabinets in their neighborhoods to be considered for wraps. So there's a kind of more questions than answers on this one. Looking for some guidance and feedback, and we'll go from there. Happy to answer any questions and turn things back to you.
Thank you, Diana. You want to start? Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Diana, for a great presentation. My thoughts, at least on what's in front of me here on the screen, is that I think it's, you know, likely a combination of several of these that'll work best, right? I can imagine, you know, under the cabinet wrapping programs, that number three would be, you know, as we have new ones, that's how we would take care of that. And number two would be the ones that, you know, I forget how many there were, but that are going to be replaced in the next five to seven years. And then number one could be for those that are new enough, that they're not going to be replaced soon, that we kind of play catch-up on those. So I can imagine doing a combination of those things. And the same thing with the selection of art. I would love, you know, this first came up, I think, you know, a few years ago when I was proposing having diverse art in the city, and I wanted us to look at wraps as a less expensive way than doing some other art, public art throughout the city. And so I still have that perspective, that I think this is a wonderful way for us to display our values of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so setting aside funding or setting aside a portion of these to be specifically for diverse art, I think would be beautiful. I can also see, you know, having art competitions at our local schools and having students design arts that get, art that gets selected for these wraps. I think of, you know, the, you know, shiny boxes that are right by the fire station across from Juanita Elementary School, right? Wouldn't that be wonderful if we could have an art competition with Juanita Elementary students and could select some artwork there for the boxes there? I also think of our senior council, and they have an art show every year, right? Could we work with our senior council on selecting art from some of the senior artists in our community as well? I think that would be a pretty cool thing to do. So I think there's a variety of ways that we can go about this, and there are ways that we can work with, you know, maybe a portion of them go out from the Cultural Arts Commission for artists that are paid artists, and that's what they do. And some of it, I can imagine, are more community-building opportunities amongst different populations in our city. I would love to see a proposal for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump right in as well. I think I like the staggered approach. Let's do the ones that are going to be there for a long time. I also think we have an amazing amount of historical pictures that we used on the two downtown ones already. I think that any of the cabinets that we, that we wrap downtown should be consistent with those and incorporate that kind of a historic reference point. I'm wondering if it isn't, especially following Councilmember Falcone's sort of suggestion around, you know, something around schools. Maybe there's also Totem Lake maybe has some kind of a theme for, for what we do up there. And so what I would do is I would turn this over to the Cultural Arts Committee. I would have them pick the art from the existing art that we have, and maybe from the senior center and the rest of them. And then just have a plan for which, which ones we're going to go ahead and, and wrap, and keeping them as core to Kirkland as possible. I think Councilmember Nixon made a comment to me earlier, we don't want to decorate them for Bothell, Woodinville, and, and more. Anyway. Councilmember Pascal.
I agree with both of you. I think my, 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 my single objective was just to develop a program. So it's not just completely ad hoc whenever someone says, hey, let's do it, that we have something, that program where we're, over time, taking action. I don't see us having, I mean, I'm not, in my opinion, we don't have to go out there and do a bunch right now. It's just, let's tackle a few each year if possible, and, and do it, especially as we, we replace them. I will, it is interesting, though, I don't know about you, but I seem to notice them a lot more now as I go through other cities. Maybe it's because I'm looking at them or looking for them, but, you know, there are a lot of communities that must have programs kind of set up already, just by the amount of, of signal wraps I see. So, so that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
I support what's been said so far, as far as doing them incrementally over time. It is, it is, like all things, it's a work plan and it's a program, it's a budget issue. So if we are going to do this over time, we need to figure out how it becomes an ongoing budgetary item for us. And it, I do think that the Cultural Arts Commission can put together a program of how we do this over time and the palette, perhaps we have a menu of pre-approved wraps that we can use in certain instances. I'm more interested in doing them in business centers, especially new boxes. Keep going back to the giant one by the brand-new Bartels downtown. And I, I love Councilmember Falcone's idea of the ones around schools. So I really think that we should first focus on the ones that are within walking areas, where people are walking by them, and less about the ones that we're all driving 25 miles an hour past them. But, you know, I think this LRM process is fabulous, because it reminds us all again and again that it becomes complicated really fast. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I left out Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really, well, first, I agree with doing this. As we look at the CIP process of saying we want to do it as we replace ones, and, and look at a specific number of cabinets to wrap each year. I like the idea that Councilmember Falcone had talked about, where, and the mayor, maybe identifying some themes where downtown, we want to look at historic, we want to have a theme around equity-focused opportunities, and then go from there. And I think that the Cultural Arts Commission can help us define those buckets, what to do around schools and, and things like that. So I think that, that makes some sense. I like the idea of encouraging or potentially requiring developers to wrap their service cabinets. Hopefully, this could be something that gets worked into the planning work program under miscellaneous code amendments versus having to add another thing to the planning work program, because we just adopted that, and there's certainly nothing there I would bump. And then finally, the item on community group requests, the memo goes into more details, like developing a neighborhood program. I think it's a great idea, but definitely a lower priority when we look at what we're trying to do around neighborhoods. I think a higher priority is dealing what we talked about during the Neighborhood Safety Program of saying, the neighborhoods want rapid flashing beacons, they're super expensive, how do we go do a wrap? I would much rather figure out a rapid flashing beacon program before a neighborhood wrapping program. Thank you.
Councilmember Nixon.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm on board with everything that my colleagues have discussed. The thing I think I want to see next is like a, a work plan for what has to be done to do all these things, right? Because I'm, it's not clear to me what all the steps would be to get us to having the program in place. I mean, clearly there, like Deputy Mayor just mentioned, there would need to be something added to the Planning Commission work plan for miscellaneous code amendments. But what, what policies would we need to put in place at the city level, et cetera? And I'd like to see the staff come back to us with kind of this summary of all the things that would need to, to get done for us to get to having a program. And then we can look at, how do we prioritize those, what's the budget required for them, those, those sort of things. I'd hope we can get that pretty quickly, but if, if we were going to have a motion to direct the staff on what to do next on this LRM, that would be kind of the motion I make, would be to request that they come back to us with a fleshed-out work plan for creating this wrap program.
You want? Do you want to make that as a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Curtis, just because I heard her first. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And just to make sure I restate, so we'll come back with our program that develops an incremental program that is a partnership with the Cultural Arts Commission. an incremental program that is a partnership with the Cultural Arts Commission that lays out the processes by which we'll do this, like the CIP process, and that would also look at how we might require developers to do these as they build new ones.
Well done.
But the first product is how, the work program for how to do that.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nixon, you want to...
Sure, thanks. Well, so you all recall that at our retreat, I mentioned several topics, three of which the advice was to come back with LRM's. And so I sent emails yesterday on background on two of those. The first one is about additional, allowing additional types of electric motorized vehicles on the CKC. Currently, remember when we have a speed limit of 15 miles an hour, and we prohibit all motorized vehicles with the exception of motorized wheelchairs, electric assisted bicycles, and then city maintenance and emergency vehicles. And we have had some requests to also allow electric foot scooters and electric unicycles. There may be other electric vehicles. I mean, I don't think any of us want to have the fumes and the noise of gas-powered vehicles on the CKC, so, but I would like to have the staff do an LRM about what other electric motorized vehicle types might be allowed, and what it would take to amend the CKC trail use regulations to allow those. And so I move that we request an LRM to do that.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Curtis. Discussion? I, oh, we'll hit, Councilmember...
No, go, if you, go ahead. That's fine if you want to go first.
Well, my only concern is, pretty soon, we're going to have electric everything. And, I mean, there's electric buses and electric dump trucks and electric, I mean, everything. So I just hope that when we put this report together, we remember that in terms of what it is we want using the Cross Kirkland Corridor.
Yeah, my intent is for it to be like personal mobility things, not big vehicles.
Excellent. Councilmember Pascal.
I was just going to ask, when you come back with the LRM, assuming it passed, that you look at what the rest of the East Rail or King County, what their regulations are, just we don't, I mean, that is something that I want to make sure we're super aware of, is having unified, try to attempt to have unified regulations along the entire East Rail.
Good point. So the question is on the motion made by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Curtis, to create the LRM as re-described by the City Manager. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Nixon.
Okay, the second one has to do with AEDs, that Active Recreation Facilities and Sites. And we all know that at least the standard response time for sudden cardiac arrest is under five minutes, and if you don't get there in the first five minutes, you're not likely to survive. Each minute that goes by is less chance of survival. Some members of the public have asked us to look into providing AEDs mounted at city parks and facilities. It was noted by one of them that the city of Woodinville has an AED adjacent to their downtown soccer field complex, which is also close to their city hall. And I contacted the Parks Director in Woodinville, and they said they have had no problems with vandalism or theft or anything there. They haven't had to replace it, it's just been fine. And I think that we could do a similar deployment in Kirkland, beginning with a pilot, maybe a site or two, and then expand that gradually over time as funds are available. But I do want to understand the issues around the acquisition costs, the maintenance costs, security of the equipment, those kind of things. And so I would like to move that we ask the staff to prepare an LRM to analyze the potential to deploy publicly accessible AEDs at active recreation sites around the city.
Moved by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Falcone, create an LRM as described. Did you get that, Council, City Manager?
You got the email, too.
Excellent discussion. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick comment about this. I'm wondering if it would be appropriate and if it's possible to, when the LRM comes back, to also propose what we might do with respect to partners that we have with our active sports facilities. So I know that, so for example, in sports leagues that I've been involved in as a coach, I've been required to get CPR training, and in that training, we were actually trained by the guy who's from Woodinville. And he was president of Little League in Woodinville, and the reason Woodinville has AEDs at all their sports facilities is because he's a former firefighter, and he insisted that Woodinville have those. But thinking about that, you know, the, our partner organizations that use those facilities are training their staff in CPR and talking openly about the fact that we wish we had more AEDs at Kirkland's active sports facilities. I just wonder if there's, you know, there are some opportunities there to partner. That's all I'm asking, if that can be sort of part of the evaluation, at least a proposal how that might go. Thanks.
Yeah, it's one of the standard things in an LRM is stakeholders engagement, yeah.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Question is on the...
Well, sorry, one quick clarification on that, because I'm not asking just to involve stakeholders, I'm asking to involve them as partners in meaning that they might actually build a help-to-frase of the cost of these for the city, since it's something that they have a keen interest in themselves. Thanks.
I like it. Partners. Question is on the motion moved by Councilmember Nixon, seconded by Councilmember Falcone, to do the AED LRM.
Well stated.
She's on it.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So just very quickly on that one, since Councilmember Nixon was kind enough to send those to us ahead of time, I did get a chance to talk to Parks staff, and we, I just stated, I want to try to do these within two council meetings. Like a little bit of extension on time for this one, just because of everything going on with the ballot measure and so forth, so this one might be a little bit longer to come back, but both Lynn, Zogstra, and John Lloyd have done a lot around AEDs, so they assure us we'll get to it, but we just, that one might be a little bit delayed while we focus on the other stuff in front of us at Parks in June and July, so.
That's fine.
Sounds good. So...
The third thing? I just wanted to report on it.
You may.
So the third thing I mentioned at the retreat was graffiti abatement, and I've done more work on that, and it actually is even more complicated than I thought it was, because we actually have three different things in the city code about graffiti abatement, and they don't completely align. So rather than bring that to you tonight, I've engaged in an email thread with City Manager, City Attorney, Chief of Police, Code Enforcement, Adam, and I'm looking for some clarification on what we actually do in order to be able to present a useful LRM request to you. So we'll get that worked out sometime in the future.
That's stuff we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, great. With that, City Manager reports?
That's all I have, unless anyone has other council calendar suggestions or comments.
None of that? Okay. So we, say what? Do I need to read the thing anyway? Okay. Thank you, Darcy. This is an additional time in our meeting when we normally can hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or otherwise scheduled for public hearing on our agenda, and assuming the rest of our meeting has been concluded before 10:00 PM. If is there anyone from the public, Aaron, who wishes to make comments now either in person or by telephone? If you are present in person or virtually, you know how to do it. For those participating by phone, dial *9 to be recognized. Community members will be called in the order in which they are, in which they sign up. Seeing none, hearing none, we are now going to move to executive session to discuss the potential acquisition of real property. We will expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately...
I would say 45 minutes.
I'm going to say 10:30. Thank you.
Well, I think you can't come back early. Right, you can't come back early, but you can come back later.
Yeah, you, yep. You have to wait till 10:30 if you go that late, so you might want to just extend, go a little shorter and extend.
Okay, then 10:15?
Yeah, 10:15.
Yeah, okay.
Extend if necessary, thank you.